This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everyone, and I'd like to open the April 5th, 2021 Record of Council Meeting to order. I'll call it to order at 7:02 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda? Counselor Webb has his hand up.
Yeah, I'll move to accept the agenda as written.
Thank you. Counselor Webb is your second. Seconded by Counselor Williams. Did you call her off, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Counselor Potter is absent. Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any presentations tonight? No presentations. Moving on to the mayor's report. I do not have a mayor's report tonight, so we'll move right on to council committee meeting reports. I do not have any reports. The senior board will meet this Friday at 10:00 AM, so I'll I will be able to attend that meeting, and I'll bring back that report at the next council meeting. Go ahead, Counselor Williams.
The parks committee met. Most of the time was discussed, was spent discussing how to run a meeting, and Kim Tierney wasn't feeling very well, so the meeting was called off early. And they're looking forward to the next meeting, but not a whole lot got done at that one, other than straighten out some paperwork and stuff.
Thank you, Grant.
Cemetery meeting is not till the 14th, so I'll have something after that.
Okay. Dale?
Yeah, the Public Works Committee didn't meet. I think we've missed two now. We haven't been able to acquire a quorum again, so so hopefully we'll get something for this next month.
Okay. Any other reports? Committees? Okay, we'll move right into topics from the floor.
Okay, I have a meeting. In order to help facilitate this, there I will, I have a letter. I'll start with that. And then I have requests from two other people. Your approval, I'll just call on them when you tell me to. Does that work?
That'd be fine.
First one, it's from Mr. Stephen Assad. Dear City Council, my name is Stephen Assad, and I own 1105 Riverside Drive property, also known as Riverside Meadows Mobile Home Park. After listening to the audio recordings of the city council meetings on March 1st and March 15th, 2021, it became very evident that I needed to write this letter. Note, I did not attend the March 1st or 15th meeting only because I was told that it was simply zone correction. My attendance was not necessary until the CUP. The park had been operating with RV spaces since the 2000 flood, and has been in zoning compliance for 23 years. When I heard that the zoning has changed from that, I made a proactive effort to be in compliance versus others who have to be taken to court for compliance. Apparently, the city council didn't respect this proactiveness and morphed the meeting from a simple correction to the zoning to instead an attack on my tenants, the property, and me. I now regret not attending the city council meeting, but I humbly request the opportunity to correct my misunderstanding brought up in the background. In 2015, 1105 Riverside LLC purchased the manufactured home park from Bud Dow in Mikefield. Our vision was to take a fair, poor-conditioned, low-income housing community and improve upon it through induction of capital, good onsite management, and improvement of the tenant base. Within the first month of ownership, I met with the city specifically, Josette and Ben, to share our goals and visions for improvement to the Riverside community. Lowe's a short timeline, outline of what it was and what it is since ownership. No onsite manager. 2015 brought on Kerry Dean as onsite manager living in space 11. Unwanted tenants in the park, drugs. Cleaned up unwanted tenants to improve safety and security. Hot holes in the road. Spent over $18,000 for new road paving. Many dead trees. Spent over $25,000 cutting down dead trees and trimming to ensure safety. Fences falling into spare. Remove and restore any new, sorry, restored new fences between manufactured homes. Several sites without utilities or not operational. With permits, we updated all the sites to be operational. Rubbish in several spaces. We had the tenants work together to clean up their spaces, and we paid for dump fees if their tenants are low income. Park rules were not being followed and not updated. Onsite manager walks the property weekly and enforces park rules through write-up and tenant communications proactively. Tenancy qualification was not set. We created a stringent tenancy qualification that ensured no drugs, emphasis on safety and security to our community. Our background checks looks for past evictions and criminal history. We reference check each tenant thoroughly where we file them occupancy. This creates safety for all the community and the city as well. Listening to the city council meeting audio, I noted your concern. Number one, the park is dirty. The park has too many cars. It is scary to walk through there. Where is the owner? Can we have the ordinance officer enforce things? Honestly, I was very surprised to hear all these negative concerns. Allow me to respond to these concerns through police reports, ordinance officer discussions, and online reviews from past tenants. A, in March 2021, ordinance officer Eva noted rubbish in space 1 and space 19. Space 1 had several trash bags outside of the home, and space 19 had a couch in front of the home. We worked with these tenants financially to help them dump this rubbish. By the weekend, the rubbish was gone. Prior to this incident, there were zero ordinance issues over the last six years. B, through transparency, I personally invited the ordinance officer to walk the park with the onsite manager Kerry Dean to identify any other issues or recommendations. There were none recommended. C, police officers are typically active in public housing communities due to drug crime. This is absolutely not the case that we're concerned about. Sorry, let me mute someone a click. Sorry, they look at the police activity records for 2021. We don't have drugs, and we do not have crime within the park. I personally walk the property during my monthly visits and greet each tenant. I would personally feel very safe and secure having my family live within the Riverside community. D, look at the onsite reviews attached. We all know that people are not shy about letting you know if a place is a dump or scary through social media. I have attached the four most recent reviews covering one-year period, showing three five-star reviews of the comment, "I live there, I love it", and one four-star review with an average of 3.6 stars due to climbing from an initial mess. We all know that nothing is perfect, but as you can see in the last six years of ownership, ownership, we have a zero tolerance policy on drugs, zero tolerance crime policy, improve the infrastructure, including roads, trees, and utilities, enforce new park rules with cleanup, stringent background checks on all new tenants, and most important, proactively partnered with the city and law enforcement to ensure compliance at all times. Through the above efforts, our goal is to sustain a community that is a positive contributor to the city of Veronia, while continuing to provide low-income housing. I'm truly grateful for this opportunity. Stephen Assad.
Thank you, Stephanie. I might remind those participants in this, in this segment of our agenda, prestate your name before you speak and your address for the record. So, welcome, Mr. Assad. I'm glad you're at this meeting tonight. You could go ahead and unmute yourself, Stephen, if you wish to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hobart. Sorry, I was on mute when I said that. Yeah, I listened to the meetings, the first of the month and the 15th of the month. And I, like my letter stated, and as Stephanie read, I really regret not attending those meetings so I could answer some of your questions. And of course, when I listened to those meetings, some of you felt that how is it someone that's requesting an ordinance correction is not attending that meeting? The way it was told to me, it was a simple ordinance correction. We haven't changed anything in the property. We haven't added anything. We haven't requested to edit anything. The property's been the way it was for 23 years since the 98th flood. And we want it just to be in the correct zone, not, not in the incorrect zone. So with that being the case, I'm here now, and if there's, and my manager is actually online, and I think there's some tenants online who also heard the, the city council discussions that were not happy. They felt that they were going to be homeless, and there was this hysteria and rumor of things going the wrong way here, just for a correction in ordinance. So I'm here now, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I have my manager online as well. She's happy to answer them. And if there's anything, I'd like to answer any questions, any concerns.
Thank you, Stephen. I kind of, I'm going to use a little analogy on the last meeting, Stephen. And I, I've been thinking quite a bit about what took place and the process that we were presented from the, the planning commission and the city to change the zoning down there. I, I'm going to use this analogy. We were all on this one ship. And we, I don't know if you're familiar with sailing, but when you go in irons, that means there's no, there's no wind in your sails. You're heading straight into the wind. And I, I think that's what kind of happened at the last meeting, and fortunately, I think we were able to all come together and realize what the ramifications of our, of our now passing that zoning change. And right in the middle of the meeting, we, we had a reconsideration of, of what that outcome might be. And I, I think we came together and as a, as a group and, and decided that it was best that we do change the zoning and, and to move it forward. And I'm really glad we did because that would have, like you said, Stephen, it would have displaced some people that have been living there for quite a while. And, and I think you did get it right. Some of us are new on the council this year, and, and we're just getting started again. And, and I appreciate you being on this call tonight, so maybe anyone else could speak further on it. But I think we got our winds back in our sails, and, and I, I think you have the support of our council and, and our city administrator and her staff to move forward in the permit process. And, and so I, I think it's going to be a good thing for the future of your park. And that's about all I have to say on that, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Hobart. Thank you. You know, it's really, it's really, we have 40 families. It's a community, in honesty. If you guys think about it, it's 40 families. And right now, we're in a pandemic. We have unemployment, and we have a homeless issue. You know, it didn't, it didn't make any sense to me that we would want to create additional homeless issues in a pandemic during unemployment just because we want to correct a zone, just to correct the zone. That's all we're doing. We're not adding, we're not removing, just correcting a zone. And I appreciate that everybody had that change of mindset to understand that. I mean, I had some tenants who called me, and they said, "We're just going to park RV over at the city council's parking lots", you know? I was like, "No, you guys don't want to do that". But they were being, you know, they're being funny, and I laughed about it a little bit. And, but the bottom line is that, you know, we're, we're all trying to make, you know, the current situation that we all deal with here, which is unemployment, pandemic, and homelessness, we're all trying to make a better city, right? And I'm trying to make a better community at the same time. That's why I took the time to write a two-page letter, giving each one of you knowledge of what we've been doing since the day we actually, you know, took management of the property. So I'm hoping with this knowledge, you can see that we're doing improvements. We're not, we're not letting it go. And I've outlined everything that we've been doing, and I've given it to Josette to read it as well, because I've dealt with Josette quite a bit. I dealt with Ben. I've dealt with Ginger when she was there. I've dealt with, you know, many other people. Of course, I dealt with Stephanie. And now I'm dealing with, with Matt, which is a great gentleman. He's been very helpful. But then, the day, I think we want to grow the community in a positive way, and we don't want to, you know, hurt each other in that growth, in my opinion. I think Susan Wagner stated the best. The state is looking for additional low-income housing. This is a state initiative. We got homeless pandemic. A homeless, if you go to Portland, you'll see them everywhere. And I, I heard there's some in, in Veronia, but nothing like, like, like the cities of Hillsborough underneath the bridges, not like the cities of Portland underneath the bridges and all around the highways. It's a serious situation, and we don't want to make that worse. We want to help. The people who live in my property, I'll give you an idea of who, what kind of people we have in the property, so you can kind of feel the sense of the families. I have people on social security who only make $1,300 to $1,500 a month. Now you tell me where they can live and eat for $1,500 a month. This is all they have. That's their social security. Single women, single men, living on that. At the same time, we also have people who work at Intel, who live at the property, who enjoy, you know, living out in the country and can, can still go to work at Intel. So we have both sides. And then at the same time, we also have families who have kids, three, four kids, who are also living on, on fixed income. We want to help these kind of families. We don't want to put them in the street, guys. I mean, city council is there to help the people. That's why they're voted, to help the people. We want to help these people. That's, that's all I've got to say. If there's any questions, I'd be honored to answer them.
Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Stephen, for coming on tonight. I wish I could have heard your letter. We have some audio issues here tonight. I will read your letter. I'll have our Stephanie send it to me in my email. So, but I do wish you would have been on earlier. You talked about correcting a zone. The way I understand it, it was zoned that way when you purchased it, so I don't know if correcting a zone is the way I seen it. I see it as a change of zone, and I was told at the time that there was an expansion going on of more stuff going in there. And then also, the map I was provided showed the wrong piece of property highlighted. So there were some miscommunications, I think, on, on, on what I was seeing requested on that first meeting we had. And that's probably along with that, and, and I was told that our code enforcement was not allowed in the park. And so there were several reasons why that first round I voted no on that. I ultimately ended up voting yes on that at, at the end. I don't think anybody at council wanted to kick people out, as you've said a couple of times. There's always a waiverance that you can do during COVID or different things, which I think we've talked about at the meeting that you've listened to, obviously. So I wasn't sure who initiated it. I wish you would have been on. I know it's not mandatory. I got an email from our lawyer that said it wasn't mandatory or part of it. So sometimes it is good to talk to the owner or the person that's, you know, in charge of somewhere and ask questions. It'd been a while, a year or two ago. I can't remember quite. I think it was about a year ago. I was walking down there, and there was somebody that said they were in charge, was, you know, really smelling of alcohol. So I did have some concerns. It looks like you've got some new management, which is good. I don't think there's anybody on council that wants to kick anybody out of anywhere. So I hope you're pleased with the zoning change, and I hope none of us regret it. But, and I think you meant since 1996 flood, not 1998. Is there any questions you have for me?
No, I'm just disappointed that you had some misinformation. Thank you for your inputs on that. We did let Eva into the park. We actually are the ones who requested her to come and walk the park with the manager. We set a date, and she walked the park with the manager the next day. So that was misinformation that you had. Number two, the park had not been changed since the flood. It had RV spaces prior to me owning the park. So those RV spaces must have been there for 23 years or so. So I was requesting something very simple, and I was told it's very simple, which is a correction for that 23 years where the park's been running with RVs. And I was told that it was unnecessary for me to be there because it was a simple change. So I didn't attend because I felt it was simple, and I think Matt also felt it was simple. So there's a lot of misunderstandings, and that's why I wrote the letter, to put it in writing, and it's formal. And, and I hope you take an opportunity to read the letter so everybody is on the same baseline, and we don't have any more misunderstandings.
I will read your letter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Assad, for being with us tonight and sharing your letter. And, and I'm sure things are going to improve. And I, I'm going to use this again. We're, we're, we got the full sails, and we're sailing ahead. And I think we're doing what's best for the community. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. Thank you, city council. Thank you.
Another participant, Stephanie.
Okay, the next person I have is Gloria Lilitham. Are you on the line?
Hello, this is Gloria Lilitham.
Yeah, Gloria, you say, okay, go ahead. I'll introduce.
I live at 736 Bridge Street Apartment A.
Okay, Gloria.
And I have concerns with people parking in the alley slash driveway. We've lived here, it'll be a year, and at least maybe every other day, there's either people blocking the driveway or parked in the driveway. And I've taken it upon myself to go down and express to the people that this is a driveway. It's not a parking spot. We've even gone over to the Cedar Side and to the dispensary and asked them if they see people parked there to please inform them that this is a working driveway and for them not to block it. It's generally pretty good. I have concerns, though, because there are three families that use the driveway as access to their homes. And I was just wondering what we can do to try to fix this. I've had, I've not had the need to call the police. Generally, after three to five minutes, someone has come to their car, and they have been quite kind and courteous. And, oh, okay, I'm sorry. We won't park here again. There have been a few, though, that have been quite verbal and nasty when I expressed that, you know, it's a driveway. On the 20, I believe it was the 26th of March, though, there was a car parked, and I waited 10 minutes. No one showed. So I called the dispatch office, and they said they would send someone. Well, I waited another 15 minutes, and still no police officer showed up. And at that point, the gentleman got in his car and left, and I did say that it was a working driveway, and please don't park there. And he said, "Okay, I'm sorry. I won't park here again." My concern is, what if there was an emergency? What if we needed to get an ambulance up here? When we first moved in, there was someone parked there. In fact, it was Ironside Grill. Come to find out, he was at the post office. My daughter had to hunt him down. I have lots of concerns that, you know, what if there was an emergency? What if we needed to get a fire truck up here? What, what can we do?
Josette?
So just, I wanted to share my screen, Gloria, so that council knows what we're talking about.
Okay.
A minute. So you see the arrow. It's actually a public alley that they access the driveways you can see that go to the houses on Park Drive and then to the apartments that are above the Brun, in the top of the Brunsmen Building. One of the easy things we could do is paint the threshold yellow so that it looks like a yellow no-parking curb all the time. It's a little hard because that gravel kind of kicks down. We've been working on solutions for kind of runoff because it's all gravel all the time as you go up that kind of steep. But we could at least start with painting it yellow.
So I, I have a question.
Go ahead, JR.
Gloria, thanks for calling in. Is this a problem with them parking in the alley or in, in the street blocking the alley?
Both.
Okay.
We recent, we recently put signs on the side of the Brunsmen Building saying, "No parking", and so far, since we put it up, we have not had anybody parking in the driveway. I don't know if we have seen it or what.
That looks like your, that looks like your only access out from your parking spot above the apartment there or house?
That is the only access.
Okay. Well, I don't know why a sign couldn't be posted and just tow the people.
Yeah, I think they're getting a, by the time Rob would come to tow them, they're typically just causing trouble by parking there. They're not staying for a super long time, but just enough for access to be blocked. And so we could call for a tow, but they'd probably be gone before he gets there. But we can definitely paint it and, you know, pay attention to it.
Definitely. Counselor Webb?
Yeah, but if it's actually, you know, we mark that as a no-parking area, and if somebody documents it, can't chief have an officer cite them? I mean, I, you know, people are just dropping, stopping there and running in and getting their pizza or doing whatever. I mean, that's going to be a continual problem until, you know, we might have to educate people a little, little more than just a sign, if, if that's the behavior.
Well, I don't, chief's on. I don't, can you cite off a picture, chief?
We would have to be able to identify who was driving it. So it's oftentimes, it's best if they're still there. On the case last time, when Officer Hibbs got there, the car was already gone. But he was planning on just towing the vehicle at that point because it's public access or public right-of-way. But yeah, if it's posted, it gives us a little bit more power. If we could get a picture of a license plate and a driver, that would be great.
Could I make a comment about the incident on, when I did call the police officer? Waylon is, I can't remember his last name. He is the handyman, and he happened to come by during that same incident. And he said, "Oh, I see a police officer up at the mini-mart". He turned around and drove up there. He came back, and the police officer said, "Well, I don't know what you want me to do. They called me. But I don't know what you want me to do". Now that's what Waylon told me.
Yeah, the officer actually called me to find out if, if we could tow from there. And I told him, "Yeah, we can tow from there", and then he was going to go tow, and then it was gone.
Yeah, you know, even a citation or something or a warning. But my, my concern is because we have young kids here. Two, three of the families up here have young kids. If there was some accident that we needed to get the ambulance up here, and if someone was parked blocking it, then we have to go try to find them. We have to call the police and have it towed. And that's minutes that are being wasted in trying to get. And that's minutes that are being wasted in trying to get emergency help up here.
I agree.
But most, most people are really good when I go down and say, you know, please don't park here, you know. And they don't. I've not seen the cars that I've said something to back again. But it's just, you know, I'm just concerned for my grandkids and stuff.
Yeah, and I think, I think a posting might help. If not, I encourage you to call in every time that occurs.
And do you want me to call the non-emergency number or just keep on calling dispatch?
Dispatch is the non-emergency number. You don't, you're not necessarily gonna get anybody at the office all the time. So the non-emergency number is our dispatch center, so that's, that's.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you very much, Gloria, for bringing this to our attention. And, you know, eyes in the community really help us out. And it sounds like it's on our radar now, so hopefully we'll keep that alleyway open for you. Thank you, Gloria.
Well, thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, goodbye.
Bye-bye. Anyone else? Stephanie?
Yes, I have Michael Calhoun on the line. Michael?
Hey, everyone.
Hi, Michael.
Am I good to go?
Yep.
All right, cool. Michael Calhoun, 60685 Black Road, Vernonia. I'm here today to talk about the Hiroshima peace tree. I am the one who brought this to Parks Committee about two months ago, and then Parks brought it to city. And I understand there is a concern that the council has about a potential scent from the berries if it happens to be a female tree. And what I had hoped to do tonight was try and help address those concerns and hopefully find a way to implement a planting of this tree within Vernonia. So just a little bit about the tree, one dimension. It's a Ginkgo species, and when this program designates a community to receive a tree, it's about less than a foot tall, and it's true that we will not know if it's a male or a female. And if it is a female, it happens to produce a berry that has a slightly unpleasant odor. But I really wanted to get into the weeds of that. So if we get a tree and it happens to be a female, okay, well, here's what happens. It will reach maturity about 10 to 25 years old. So that'll be around 2030, 2045. And the branches will be about 20 feet long, so it'll be about a 40-foot diameter. And when it does produce berries, it would only produce these berries once a year and for about two to three weeks in the fall, and that's it. And the berries would drop directly underneath the tree. So there's not a concern or a worry about spread from the berries. And they're not a totally wasteful byproduct. I was looking at communities in Japan collect the berries, and you're able to dry roast the nuts, so they are edible in that way. And they're about marble, they're less than a golf ball size. And one of the benefits of a female tree as opposed to a male is that it doesn't produce pollen. So for anyone that has allergies, that won't be a concern because it's a hypoallergenic tree. But I just want to say that all the biology, put that aside. I found out about this program late last year, and I felt that it was so historically culturally significant that I thought this would be an asset to the Vernonia community. It was started by Dr. Hidiko Tamara Schneider. She's an atomic bomb survivor. When she was 10 years old, her mother was killed, and she eventually moved to Medford, Oregon. And she's spent her life trying to promote peace. And last year was the 75th anniversary of the Hiroshima bombing. And as a way to honor the event, seedlings were collected from a tree that survived the atomic bomb blast in Japan and were distributed to communities throughout Oregon. And currently, 31 cities in Oregon have this tree planted. Several of them have multiple trees planted within the city limits. So each one of these communities was well aware of the concerns of it being a female that the Vernonia now has, and they were able to find a place for it. And I think that's what's key, is placement. One of the things I think is so cool about Vernonia is for the small size that it is, we have a really comparatively large park system. And I do believe there is a place for this. And that the argument alone about a somewhat unpleasant scent doesn't hold weight, I believe, to flat-out deny the treaty, considering that Spencer Park, which is being promoted as the flagship park of Vernonia from the Parks Department in the city, happens to be situated next to an open sewage lagoon. And as someone who grew up in Vernonia, I know that when we would play out recess at the old school grounds, which is now Spencer, and then later on in high school, the joke amongst all the kids was every time the wind would blow, ah, it smells like Vernonia. So I would just say that there already is a scent problem that is not going to be going anywhere anytime soon. And that I do believe that there's a place for the tree. And what I had hoped to do tonight was appeal the decision that was made last week and hopefully move this to either a discussion at the next meeting on the 19th. And that way, we could have a dialogue together and other members of the community besides myself, who would like to see this tree plant can participate and voice their support. So I thank you for your time, and I look forward to moving forward with this issue.
Thank you, Michael. And I might remind you before anyone else shares their discussion about the tree. We, as a council body, do not, during this part of the agenda with the audience participation, we do not make a decision at this time, but we sure will think about it and talk about it and possibly, very likely, bring it to our next council meeting on the agenda. So are there any questions for Michael? JR?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, State Council did change its mind. When does a tree need to be planted? When can the tree be obtained?
Um, it, I, the reason why I wanted to press this is because it's not a recurring program. It was just one-and-done, 75th anniversary. The seedlings were being held in Salem, and there's currently five left. And when they're gone, they're gone. And I talked to the forester who's been taking care of them. He said they may do 100th anniversary in 2045. But for now, that's, it took a long time to germinate these seeds. So that's why I felt that there was an urgency in finding a resolution to this. So I guess just the sooner the better, if that was the decision. Currently, the five are open to communities that want them or communities that have a tree and it, for whatever reason, has died. And those are the replacements for communities that have already had them. So that was the concern I had with wanting to address this now.
And then one more thing, Michael. If this comes up again, could you please come back with the information on elevation? Because if my memory serves me right, there was some comments that this tree would not do well at this elevation and in this weather pattern up here. So maybe you could find some trees in a similar elevation and weather pattern and make sure that it actually survives.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Michael, are there any other trees of the same species that came from this seed from Japan that are planted in Oregon right now?
From the, the main one was a Ginkgo tree. And then that was the one that was, yeah, if I'm pronouncing it right. And that was the one that's in the 31 different cities. They did have, if you look at the website, there was another option for a persimmon tree, but they only had seven planted. It just, it just, for whatever reason, they only germinated seven as opposed to 46 for the other one. So the five remaining for the Ginkgo tree.
Okay. Any other questions for Counselor Webb? Go ahead.
Well, I think you hit on the key component is location. And I don't think council wants to sit here through a meeting and try to figure out the location. So that's, that's the key component. I don't know, through the Parks Committee, it would definitely be one avenue. You know, the city administrator and head together and try to come up with a solution to where we can put this, where it can be viewable, but maybe not so smellable. And yeah, Vernonia's secret weapon would probably overpower it when the east wind blows.
I guess the one thing I forgot to mention is when it is planted, there is sort of a ceremony, and we can invite Dr. Hidiko to come out, and she has a presentation that she gives. And a plaque is installed next to the tree that has one of those little smartphone squares that people, you know, if you have your smartphone, you can click it and find out more information about it.
Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Okay, any other participants tonight, Stephanie?
I do not. Have anyone else?
No more. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, if there's no other participants, we'll move right into our public hearing. Public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering proposed Title IX amendments in file number PA 20-01. The procedure I would like to follow tonight is in this manner. I will read the disclosure statement, hear the staff report, hear public testimony, close the hearing, and the council will deliberate. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call this hearing to order at 7:45 PM, April 5th, 2021. My name is Rick Hobart. I am the chairman of the City Council of Vernonia. Our role is to conduct public hearings and to make legislative decisions about land use manners, matters in Vernonia. The item before us tonight is a legislative item. Members of the City Council are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the members of the City Council whether they have any potential conflicts such as family, financial, or business relationship with regard to the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, I will ask whether the council member in question believes he or she is without exobias or whether he or she would like to step down during the case review. A copy of the rules of procedure for the hearing, the agenda for today's hearing, and copies of the staff reports are available upon request. Any person with an interest in today's agenda item may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. It is also important that you make your best case to the City Council because although all of the decisions are subject to appeal, any such appeal will be heard by the Land Use Board of Appeals, and they will decide the appeal based solely on the evidence in the record before us. Please make sure your testimony is relevant to applicable standards for the item in question. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. If I think your testimony is irrelevant or repetitious, I may interrupt and ask you to continue with another subject. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Please refrain from them. Comments from the audience will not be part of the record. Are there any questions? That concludes the introduction. Does any City Council wish to declare any potential conflict of interest? If not, then will the staff please proceed with a summary of their written report? And we have Matt Straight with us tonight, so I'll turn it over to Matt and the staff.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Fellow council members, Matt Straight presenting tonight for staff. So we have kind of an update to the, to the code that we're doing here tonight. We have 20 different items that we're doing. Right now, the code update looks kind of daunting, but it's really 20 very small things that altogether may appear to be a bit larger. And so, Mayor, did you want me to go through each item and then pause for questions after each item? Or did you want me to just plow right through the whole thing and then come back if there are any questions?
Whatever's easiest for you, Matt. I know there's, there's eight.
20.
20, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you gonna just read the, the changes in italics or?
I was just going to give a brief summary to each one.
Okay.
Okay, you got it. On the first one, we did an update to the code not too long ago. And during that time, the Department of Land Development and Conservation, the DLCD, which is kind of like the state's planning department, gave us some comments they wanted us to change, and we kind of punted them. Will said, you know what? We'll get to those next time we fix our code. Well, this is the next time. So this is one of the items we were gonna fix, and that was the definition of a family. They thought that that was antiquated, and so we've just deleted the definition of family altogether. And that was the first item on our list. Any questions on that one before I move on? All right, that was kind of simple. All right. Second one, could be a little bit more controversial. We've gone kind of ping pong on this in the city of Vernonia. What we're planning on doing is removing a single-family home as a permitted use in the downtown area. Now, we started with that when we first created the downtown zone not too long ago. And a lot of the folks came out and protested that. And so we went ahead and added single-family homes as a permitted use. But now we want to revisit that. We feel that single-family homes aren't getting us to the goal of what the downtown area should be. We'd like to remove single-family home as a permitted use. So your next question might be, well, what about all the single-family homes that are already in the downtown zone? Those would simply become what's called a legal non-conforming use. That means they can continue doing it as long as they want. No one's gonna stop them. But if they do take a home and change it to a commercial use, it can't go back to a single-family use. Now, when we took this to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission was particularly concerned about what happened if any of those single-family homes got damaged in a flood or heaven forbid, even worse, the whole darn thing burned down. Well, with a legal non-conforming use, there are standards in our code that say if it burns down to 80% of the structure, then you have to stop the use and do the correct use instead. The Planning Commission had some concerns with that. And so what they did was they revised the legal non-conforming section of our code for downtown to specifically have it say, if you're in the downtown zone, your home can be 100% destroyed, and you still have a right to rebuild it. And that was kind of a compromise they saw to allow the homes that are there today to stay there. As long as they need to stay there, that's just fine. So that was kind of a summary of what we're doing there. Did any questions on that one? All right, I will take no questions. We will move on. Item number three is relatively simple. This one just says that our code currently outlawed T-111, which for those of you who aren't in the construction industry, it's a kind of plywood with grooves in it. And for a long time, it was very popular as an external siding on homes, but it didn't fare so well in the past. When water hit it, it tended to fall apart like cardboard. And so a lot of cities put it on their list of items that you can't use on the outside of homes because it tended to get pretty nasty looking pretty quick, and then people wouldn't replace it. However, we think T-111 has come a long way. It's kind of the unsung hero now. It doesn't fall apart when you get it wet. It's a pretty solid surface. Heck, I have T-111 on the outside of my house here in Tooleton, and it does just fine. And so we think it's time to go ahead and delete that and allow T-111 once again as siding in the city of Vernonia. Any questions on that one? All right. Oh, Counselor Webb?
It is mandatory that it is the upgraded, more superior product, right?
We were simply removing it from the prohibitions. We weren't adding any kind of qualifiers to that. We weren't planning on it. We certainly can.
Well, I mean, if we know, if we know there's a product that falls apart when it rains in our area, that could be a problem.
I don't know if any T-111 is problematic in that way anymore. I think it's generally come a long way as an entire industry for T-111.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be disappointed if somebody had a stack of it in their garage, and it's the old stuff that falls apart. I mean, I'd be worried if somebody had a stack of it in their garage and it's the old stuff that falls apart. Are we gonna say go for it?
I believe we would.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
We would, because we wouldn't have a way to prove one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay, Matt.
Um, Mayor, I believe Counselor Allen had a question.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just gonna make a comment on T111. I hadn't heard it had problems. I know, I know there was some lap siding that had a lot of recalls and problems, but when I look up OSB T111 siding has more issues with water because of how it's manufactured. It's made of wood strands and flakes, and is treated with resin to bind it together when pressure is applied in the process. If OSB T111 siding gets wet, it swells, expands, and flaking, chipping, eventually will rot. That was April 1st, 2019 article I'm reading. So the problem is if it's not kept up in good paint, it, just like anything, I guess it's gonna, it's gonna have problems, so. Not that I'm against T111, I'm just saying that's what, that's what the book is saying there. I think Georgia Pacific had a problem with their press board sightings. I had a friend of mine had to tear it off his house and they gave him some money back. And so, I don't quite remember T111 having those same issues, unless it's neglected, obviously. But I do remember the Georgia Pacific press board siding had some issues of swelling and coming apart, so. That's all I had, just a comment.
Okay. All right, moving on here with number four. And number four, we wanted to clarify our standards for accessory uses. Right now, our code applies the same standards we apply to a single-family home to all of their accessories. And that's kind of a high bar for a lot of folks who might have a larger property and might want to put up a metal pole barn or something like that. That wouldn't satisfy our current standards in the code today. And so what we've done is we've added kind of an out clause for folks. If you really can't see the structure from the road, we've said it's all right to go ahead and have no specific standards for that structure. And so we've kind of made a, an out for larger properties is the idea behind that. Any issues with that one?
Counselor Webb.
Well, talk about being viewable. How viewable? Can you just see the peak of it, you know, just the? I mean, it, it seems to be kind of vague.
Yeah, we left it kind of vague on purpose because it got really difficult to craft exactly how much could be seen. We didn't really want to be that detailed on it to allow some flexibility in actually implementing it. It would largely be complaint-driven moving forward anyway.
Well, I don't quite understand that because you're, it's whether you're gonna permit the use, the building of it, right? And so, yeah, I mean, how would you even determine that before it's built, how viewable it's gonna be? Am I reading this wrong?
No, that was the intent, for sure, was to just make sure that it wasn't, I guess it, it would be something that would be largely visible from the street. I don't think it's 100% visibility, because of course you're gonna be able to see a pole barn from different places, but we wanted to be sure that people weren't putting a pole barn right next to their house, or, you know, 10 feet from the house. And then everybody from the street would have to visually see that, and that might not keep the same standard that folks were expecting up and down the rest of the street. We can certainly add a qualifier to that to make it more specific if it pleases the council.
Yeah, I kind of have a concern on that one, because one example would be out on Bridge Street there, out in front of me there. People put in a metal shop. I don't know if it's pole barn construction, but it could have been. And I think it was a replacement for an old garage that was there. Yeah, it's kind of a big metal structure now. I suppose some people might not like it, but being a person that has a pole barn right next to him here, shop, I don't have an objection to that. And, yeah, I'm afraid that one might be a little sticky wicket. I mean, I envisioned even building another pole barn eventually behind me here. And, you know, if you can see it from Texas Avenue, see the roof, is that gonna be, including me, building one? That seems.
We could change that to say that there are no standards for an accessory structure that's not next to or in front of the primary dwelling.
That would be, yeah, I mean, I could see the objection to that being in front of the building. That would be pretty objectionable, but when it's behind or, or when it's uniformly placed, you know, my, my situation, I'm kind of an L shape along the property line. I don't know. Of course, I have a private driveway, but you can still probably see it from some public street in town, though.
Counselor Williams.
Would it be appropriate to add a provision in there that matured trees, once they're planted, would block it from sticking out like a sore thumb?
We certainly could.
Well, I'm just asking the question, would that, would that, you know, minimize the, the ill effect that some people might feel by seeing a pole barn? If there were some trees planted that would obscure it?
Stephanie.
The only problem I can see with that one is that trees can be removed in the future, whereas location and its orientation behind the house, that's controllable. So if we permit a shop to go in and say, you're finding your screen from view of these trees, and then in a year, they cut down the trees, there's no way to track that, that those trees have to be kept or they have to be replanted.
Good point.
JR, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a question for staff. What is driving this change? I see pole barns in the city limits scattered around. So is this about pole barns or is this about ADUs in any way?
This is actually the inverse of what you're saying, is we've had somebody come in for an accessory structure, and when we looked through the code here, we realized we couldn't permit what they wanted to do. And that, that illuminated a larger issue where all accessory structures on all lots everywhere are supposed to have the exact same standards as a house, which means every pole barn you're seeing in the city is technically against the code. We think that's ridiculous, so we're trying to fix it and let people keep putting in pole barns. We're not anti-pole barn, we are pro-pole barn.
Well, yeah, well, I'm not saying I'm against it either, but there's gonna be situations where somebody's window at the front of their house is facing out this way, and then somebody puts a big giant metal wall right in front of them. And, you know, then you're gonna have probably some issues there, but. I don't know if I can.
Between a tight residential area that has really small lots and a big farm where it's really not gonna be a problem. And that's why we chose that standard viewable from a street was because we felt that really let larger lots do their thing without any kind of problem, but didn't allow a 5,000 square foot lot to put a metal woodshed in their backyard right in front of their neighbor's window and create a problem because it didn't have the same standards as the house.
Well, I'm all for government getting out of the way, but when you just say, structure seen from the road, and you say you kept it with wiggle room in there, well, what is road? Is that Highway 47? Is that our main thoroughfares? Is that our alleys? You know, I could argue that point to my favor or against my favor on any, anything in the city if I wanted to build or not build, or. So I, I don't, I just won't worry that you're setting yourself up for arguments both ways by just saying the road.
Well, we can strike that and just say you're not allowed to put any accessory structure in front of or next to your house that doesn't meet the same standards as your house.
Yeah, I don't know what the right answer is. I just saw a red flag there, just like Counselor Webb about the road. It wasn't real specific, you know. I, I don't know.
Well, if it pleases the, the council, I'll go ahead and make that change. Mayor, I think Josette has a.
Josette.
So I have a question, Matt. So currently, with the way the code is, or with the way you're proposing the code could be changed, someone could put the threshold of a pole barn ahead of the threshold of their house?
Yes.
So I think that's one thing that you should, that council should propose, like Counselor Webb said, making sure it's behind the threshold of the house. And then the house is really gonna still have the, they can only have 50% coverage of the property. So we're not gonna let someone build 75% of their backyard plus their house. If that over, if that exceeds 50%, they're gonna have to shrink the size of their pole barn to match, right, with setbacks and not overcrowding their properties building.
Sure, that's correct.
So that threshold thing really solves the problem because they're gonna have setback restrictions depending on where their lot is, if it's on a corner, if it's on the, you know, and then they're gonna have to have distance from the house for fire code. So it won't be able to just be building on buildings stacked in a lot. And that threshold will really solve the problem and still give people the right to build what they want on their lot as long as it follows setback, lot coverage with structures and fire code.
Well, it sounds like if it pleases the council, we'll make that change. We'll strike the part that says seen from the road, and we'll add that it can't be in front of or next to your house and not meet the standards of a single-family home. So you can still put the next to your house, it's just gotta meet the standards of your house. Sound like a plan?
Well, wait, you're saying it has to be, it has to have the design elements of the house?
If it's next to or in front of the house, yeah. Or we could just prohibit accessory structures in front of the house if you want.
Well, and when you say in front of the house, you're saying closer to the street than the house.
Correct.
So I could build my house here and set 10 feet back, build a pole barn that does not match the front facade of my house. I think that's what we're talking about.
No, the change I would make to the code would say that if you are going to put an accessory structure anywhere in front of your house or next to your house, it has to have the same standard satisfied as your single-family home. If it's located to the rear of your house, there are no standards, and you can build a woodshed or a pole barn behind the house, and that's okay.
So what I'm, I'm thinking about the certain lots that would be rectangular and their house is here, and the only place to build facing an alley or road access is here. I'm thinking if it just doesn't have the same frontage, you should be able to build a pole barn if you set it back a little from the front of your house without it matching your house. Because we are gonna have people with. Yeah, here, what I hear you saying is it's gotta be completely behind the house before it can look like a pole barn.
Well, in the example that you just said, if it's large and rectangular and they put a house on the front and they want to build a pole barn next to their house, yes, this new code that I just said but haven't written yet would not allow that because it's next to the house. That's true. Do you want to change that to just be in front of the house and scratch the part about being on the side of the house?
Yeah, because I think the frontage is where the most curb appeal problem is. And if they inset it, push it back in their lot, and it's not, you know, even lined up with the front of the house, I think they shouldn't be restricted from doing something, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think of different lots, and if we make that restriction, there's people that really couldn't use, if their road access is on the, the same side as the frontage of their house, the pole barn's not gonna be any good for vehicles or anything if you have to have the entry be some other place you don't have access. But that's just my thought.
Dale.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of mirror Josette's comments on that. You know, the example I'm using, and you're probably familiar, Josette, out, out front there, it's a, you know, down pass where Fred Oviet lived there, that they put in a new metal building. And I think it did, it was a replacement for a, an old garage that was there. You know, the garage didn't meet the design standards either. And I think it's a nice-looking building they put in there, you know, it's, it was an improvement. I don't know if there's stigmas around metal buildings or what, but I'm used to it. Yeah, I agree. I think just as long as it's not out in front of the building, it shouldn't be an issue. That one is kind of on end, facing out towards the highway. But it's behind a fence, there's a fence there, so. Yeah, I, I think we need to loosen that up a little.
Okay, you got it. I can make that change.
Counselor Potter.
Okay, so I understand this correctly. If you have a long rectangular lot and you have a house and the house sits to the back of that property, and you have a lot of front available to you. So what this is saying is that you will not be able to put some type of, a, a small garage or a woodshed, a metal woodshed, or anything like that because it's gonna be planted in front of the house. Would this restrict that from, uh, uh, from, from happening? Is that what this is about?
That's a good question, yes and no. It would prohibit anything in front of that house that didn't meet the same requirements of the standards for that house. You could put a garage in front of the house, but it'd have to meet the same design standards as the house. You could put a woodshed in front of the house, but it'd have to meet the same standards as the house. If you wanted to put a metal pole barn in front of that house, you couldn't do that.
Okay, design standards, is that, is that mean finished off, get totally finished inside? Does that mean having all the amenities that a house would have when you really are wanting a shop? Is that what you mean by design standards?
It's, it's a good question. Our development code has design standards for single-family homes, and that basically says that there are certain things you have to do and certain sightings that you're allowed to use. It has standards for roof pitches and what the roof needs to be made out of, and it has a laundry list of design standards you have to choose. Uh, depending on the pitch of the roof, you have to choose five of the, of the 12 things there to put on your house. And you could have stone veneer, wainscoting on the front. You could have windows put in. It's got a lot of different choices. But, yeah, you would have to satisfy that even for the garage or anything else if this went forward the way we're talking about.
That, that sounds crazy to me.
So I have, I have a question, Matt. Is it just the front facade? Because I've seen pole barns where they match the house, some elements of the front, but then the three sides are metal.
It would be, well, for a single-family home, it's just for the facade, yeah.
So they could get away with just adding the design elements like a, a, because the design elements, Lorna, are like a decorative vent at the top, or, or if it has posts coming down, they're, they're wrapped with wood. So there's a lot, there's like a laundry list of detail you can add that isn't super expensive, but would make it look a little more fitting, and then the three sides could be the regular. That's one option.
Go ahead, Grant.
I think to further clarify Lorna's question, the inside wouldn't have to have a toilet and, you know, and all that kind of stuff. It just had to appear to have common things with the main structure.
That's correct.
JR.
So what if your main structure is a pink and white 1968 mobile home? Then you just pick from one of the design standards that's suitable for Vernonia, and they don't match anyway?
Correct, there wouldn't be a requirement that you match the existing single-family home, just that you hit one of the, the required number of laundry list items in the code, correct? They don't have to match.
Pink.
Right, most people would put T111 side, or most people put lap siding and a little shingle-on-talk trying to match their house. So you're, that's what we're getting at, right?
Totally correct. Right, totally correct.
The other side, the back of it could be metal or whatever. You just want it to appear to be more like a wood structure or more like a brick structure or whatever, kinda match the hatch type thing, but if we get it right.
That's right.
Okay, can we move on to number five?
Okay, number five is, uh, the word, the idea that we're adding some hillside standards. Uh, the city of Vernonia has plenty of hillsides, but we've never really had any standards for developing on them. And we actually had a home built that created a bit of a kerfuffle, a little bit of a problem because they showed us some elevation that looked normal, and from the street, it looked like a standard, single-family, uh, one-story home. And then when they went actually to build it and called for a sticker of occupancy, we went out there to realize that the backside of the building was darn near 50 feet off the ground because they built it into the side of the hill, and now all the neighbors who were downside of that were staring at a monolithic structure, and we had really no, no way of saying no to that because we didn't have any design standards. So we're proposing to add a few. Some of those include, uh, the geotechnical studies are required if you're trying to build on a subdivision on a slope over 15%. Uh, we've added some text that says that, uh, you can't build on anything over 35% slope at all, period. It specifies retaining wall heights and finished slopes for 25% or more. It talks about requiring a higher level of permit if you're developing on hillsides, uh, subdivisions or things like that. They have to become conditional use permits. That way the planning commission can see them and make sure that they're done the right way. And one of the benefits of requiring a conditional use permit is that you have to meet the standards of a conditional use permit. And the standards for a CUP require that you mitigate impacts to the neighbors. So what we saw happen on that monolithic structure, which gives a huge impact to the neighbors visually, wouldn't happen again because they have to satisfy the conditional use permit criteria before they could move forward. And so these are the kinda things we're proposing to put into the hillside standards. We've taken these standards from other jurisdictions. Uh, we didn't pull any out of a hat. They've all come from other cities. And we think that's really going to help prevent that kind of building from happening again. Uh, any questions on that before we move on?
Counselor Webb.
No, I just wanna commend you for adding this in here. I think that was lacking in Vernonia's codes here. And, uh, I've always been a little hesitant of this building on these steep hillsides. And I've seen what happened over in Longview and some other cities, and they get, you know, they're slide prone and stuff like that. So having that geotech report and some of these other things, I think, helps protect the city for future lawsuits. So thanks, Matt, for adding this, getting this in there.
Sure, you bet.
Counselor Allen.
Yeah, I too understand, uh, the need for probably a geotech and some revisions on the foundation plan, pilings and whatnot to keep them, everybody safe. But I'm a little concerned about the 35% slope. I just visited a town that was built on a 60% slope, and it's like 100 years old and it's still there. So obviously, the climate's a little different, but I just wonder where you get the 35%. What if it's 35 and a half percent? Who's gonna measure it, you know? Anyway, I just hope you could clarify that. You're on me, Matt.
Yeah. If the application comes in and we feel like the slope is over that, we would just request a geotech study that would tell us exactly what the slope is in the different portions of the site so we could see that. And of course, they could correct it. If they wanted to fix the 35, either flatten it out or bring in some fill or cut or something to fix that, there's ways to address that too. But you couldn't use piling to try and bring the house up and build on that 35%.
Why not?
Because that, uh, could create safety impacts and could have impacts on the neighbors, visually speaking.
So it's a height thing, really?
To an extent, sure, yeah. It's a visual thing. Aesthetics.
Well, I'm thinking different than you are. You're thinking piling and lifting it way up high and, and coming off a road or something. I'm thinking pilings and dug down in and put a basement in or something. I don't know. I'm, I'm probably looking at it different than you are.
Well, I'm walking a fine line between trying to mitigate the impacts and keep it as simple as possible. That's a tight rope, I admit it.
What, what's our steepest slope in Vernonia, Josette, that, that's even available to build on?
Oh, I have no idea. I'd have to look it up.
I'm not even sure we have any that are over, uh, that level. We've done a map that shows all the areas in the city that are over 25% slope because that base data is available from the state, and it's not very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Williams.
I think the distinction that JR is trying to make is, uh, if you're building on solid rock versus soil, uh, soil's gonna move a lot more. Solid rock takes a huge earthquake. I mean, there's a problem either way. One's an earthquake and one's mud and slide. But, um, I agree, the visual problem is the biggest problem. I mean, if you, if you build a house and it's the peak is 75 feet off the ground and the neighbors can't see anything because of it, that's, that's bad.
Yeah, and if the neighbors bought all the property underneath that hillside with the, looking at that beautiful hillside, of course, they don't have a right to keep that beautiful hillside. It's true because that's private property, but they at least have a right to not expect a building to come over so far that now it's casting shadows and shade on their houses. This is trying to make sure we're addressing that.
Okay, can we move on? We got a lot to cover here tonight, folks.
Okay, uh, number six. This is the Josette special. We have a part of our code that says that you are not allowed to have a drive-through lane between the drive-up window and the street. But the, where it was sitting in the code was odd because it was sitting in the portion that just applied to residential, or sorry, retail structures, and not necessarily food or banks and everything else. Josette has been applying this standard to all uses, but based on where it was in the code, that could be problematic. So what we've done is simply removed it from the retail section and added it as a standard so that it applies to all uses, banks, um, coffee carts, uh, everything. So we're really just making this, we're codifying it in a way that catches up with how we've been implementing it for years. Any questions on that one?
Counselor Webb.
So how does this apply to the new coffee stand that we're just, we went through trying to get the zoning right for? It seems like you would want them to be driving, you know, having a, I mean, what's the issue with that? Having this drive-through lane between the street and, uh, and the business?
I can answer that. Um, first, when the coffee cart came in, they actually had two lanes going around the cart, one on each side. And when we said, "You can't have a lane between you and the street", she simply moved the coffee cart over to the street, which in the end, she thanked us for because she said now she's got a lot better walk-up service window, which she likes for the summertime when there's a lot more pedestrian traffic. And she'll just have one lane that goes around the backside of the building so that the building is between the street and the actual window. And the intent behind this is simply to mitigate impacts because the window itself has noise and light and glare that could be coming out onto the street. And if you put something between that window and the street, you're mitigating those impacts.
So it makes them more like have to be what Wana is.
Okay.
In between the sidewalk and the driveway.
Well, that's on their side of their building. It's a drive-around.
Yeah, it's not on this city hall side of their building. The other thing that they, when we talked to the other coffee cart that was originally gonna be at the West Oregon Electric City property there, that skinny thing right on Rose Ave, they had talked about you could always position it so that the end of your building is facing, and the two travel lanes are not parallel with the road, and it still meets. So it's just a positioning thing to keep, um, mitigate that kind of spill out and the noise and whatever's going on, activity, safety, some, somewhat safety for the people that are in the window serving. You're not really seen that way. You can't see if persons counting all the money at night, all that kinda thing from the street.
Counselor Williams.
I don't know how many of you are familiar with what happens over in Banks when you're heading from Forest Grove back to Vernonia around school time. Uh, the street, the, the street, the main street is backed up with cars that are trying to turn the corner to pick up their kids at the school. And what my, but what I'm wondering is, are we gonna have any say about the, the flow of traffic going in and out of that coffee cart? Because when trucks come around that corner, if there's a bunch of cars backed up, are we gonna be creating a similar situation as there is in Banks?
Well, what we're talking about changing in the code here doesn't address vehicle stacking amounts, and that's really what you're asking about, is how many vehicles, uh, we allow for a drive-through to have in it. Um, we're not addressing that with our code update, and we really can't speak too much about the coffee cart because it's already been approved.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, we're talking about street, sidewalk, traffic, crossing the sidewalk. Uh, you know, I mean, it's all in the same family anyway.
Well, some cities have standards that say a fast-food or coffee cart business or a bank has to have enough vehicle stacking in their drive-through to accommodate at least, fill in the blank, X number of cars. Could be five, it could be 10. And that's, the idea behind that is to get those vehicles off the street so they're not queuing on the street. We don't have anything like that. We could certainly add that on our list of things to update in the code next time around if you like.
Well, I'm just concerned about it because I know that those, those cars in banks, they're, they're way over the line for the bicycle lane, and I mean, sometimes there's 10, 15 cars deep. I know it's a school, and it's a lot, it's a different situation, but there are similarities.
Yeah, try beating the In-N-Out in Kaiser.
Right, right.
400 cars at a time.
I know.
Yeah, if you want, we can add that to the list of things we look at next time we update the code.
Something to think about.
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay, let's keep moving.
All right. Let me make notes myself here. All right, got it. Uh, number seven, right now, there's kind of a loophole we're trying to fix. And loophole says that in the general commercial zone, you can build a single-family home with a conditional use permit. And this is something we're looking to remove. Uh, we don't feel that the general commercial zone is the appropriate place for people to build homes. We feel that we've got lots and lots and lots of residential zoning in the city of Vernonia. The dead last thing we want is somebody building a home on general commercial property, especially because we don't have a lot of general commercial property here in the city. So we're trying to say you can't build a single-family home with or without a CUP in the general commercial. And, uh, one of the examples I gave the planning commission a lot on this one was, let's take the Napa Auto Parts store, for example. What if Napa Auto Parts went under? Well, that's a pretty good commercial spot. We kinda want that to stay a commercial spot right there on the main drag through town. But somebody theoretically could apply for a CUP and build a home right there on the, on the primary street frontage for commercial in the city of Vernonia. We don't wanna see that happen, so we're trying to close that loophole. Now, that doesn't mean somebody would have no way to potentially turn Napa into a single-family home. If they really wanted to do that, they could come in for a zone change and try to change the property from commercial to residential. And then it's a much higher bar then for them to satisfy. It's not a conditional use permit then. It's a zone change. That's tougher. They've gotta do all kinds of traffic impact analysis and come to you folks, the city council, for a zone change. We like that better. And so we're just trying to eliminate single-family homes from the, from the GC zone.
Counselor Allen.
If I heard you right, Matt, you said you had to do a traffic study for a zone change. Didn't we just do a zone change on 16.3 acres?
We did, and we added a condition of approval that said if they built something significant enough, they had to do a traffic study.
Okay.
Not all, perfectly clear, not all, uh, zone changes require traffic studies. I didn't mean to imply that, but if you're doing something in a commercial area like that, a zone change just has a higher bar. You have to satisfy what's called the, uh, transportation planning rule when you do a zone change, and that's a state-level change. And that doesn't necessarily require a traffic study, but you certainly have to answer some tougher questions.
Thank you for that clarification.
Counselor Webb.
So give me a little more clarification. So we just changed that to, uh, general commercial on the Riverside down there. So a manufactured home is not viewed as a single, single-family home?
A manufactured home by itself would be. A manufactured park is not. A manufactured home park is a use that's only allowed in a general commercial zone.
Okay, so in a, in a park setting, they can put manufacturer homes in there?
Totally correct, totally correct.
Could you build a stick, stick bout, stick-built house in there then? That would be excluded.
And if we made this change, they wouldn't be able to do that. That's correct. And another great example of this, you can see, I probably shouldn't even bring this up, is the, uh, the historic Vernonia School. That was on a general commercial property, and somebody came in and turned it into a home with a conditional use permit. And the process went through fine, and we were glad it did. We, we've got a good user in there. Everybody's very happy with it. They're preserving the history. But it probably would have been better to have that same person change the zoning back to residential. And that would have probably been a better fit to put a home in there surrounded by homes. And so that was just another typical example of where we think there's still a way to do it. It just raises the bar for it, that's all.
Good.
Okay, Matt.
Okay, moving on. Uh, number eight. Uh, we added a vacation section to our code ordinance recently, and this doesn't mean a, uh, vacation to Hawaii. This means vacating street or alleys. And we added a section in there, but when we added it, we neglected to add the applicant's requirements in there, what the application requires, the different things they have to turn in for the application. We just goofed, and so now we're adding that in, and it's mirroring what all of our other applications say. But now it's gonna walk and talk like all of our other applications. Any questions on that one? Okay. That one was pretty straightforward. Uh, number nine. We have a two-step process for mapping here in the, uh, in the city of Vernonia and here in the state of Oregon. You're probably all familiar with this, but I'll go through it real quickly. One would come in for a subdivision or a partition and do what's called a tentative partition or a tentative subdivision. And then once that's approved, they have to go out and make a final version where they get a lot more scientific about it and draw it with an engineer to be an actual final plat, and then come in and have the city agree that that final plat looks like the tentative, it meets all the conditions of approval, and they can go ahead and move forward and get it recorded. And once it's recorded, that's when the actual lots become separate lots. Now, here in the city of Vernonia, we've always had a partition and a subdivision processed at the staff level. And so the tentative partition is done by staff. The planning commission never sees them. But we had a weird system where once the applicant came back in with the final plat, we had to take that to the planning commission to get every single planning commissioner to sign the actual plot, a final plat with a wet signature. I've never seen another jurisdiction do this. Our planning commission hates this because when it comes to them, they can't change it. It's too late. The tentative plat's already been approved. And so their hands are absolutely tied. All they can really do is see that it looks the same and sign it. They don't like that. Other cities don't operate this way. Most other jurisdictions simply have the city manager be the final signature on it, or the city administrator be the final signature on it. Staff would still look at it to make sure that it matches and to make sure they've satisfied all their conditions of approval. But once it's all done and the final plat is ready to roll, simple staff-level signature, and then it's off. It doesn't have to go back to any hearing bodies and go through any hearing processes. So really, all we're doing is trying to make our process match most other cities in the state. Any questions on that one? Okay, moving on. Uh, number 10. We had in our code something that was a bit misleading. It said that, um, when you bring in an application, you have to submit the application at least 30 days prior to the hearing you want to go on. But that's very misleading, and it doesn't really match the state's process. Because what the state says for land use applications is once somebody submits them, we, the city, we, planning more specifically, we get 30 days to review that application to see if it's complete. And if it's complete, we write them a completeness letter, and then off it goes to a hearing. Um, and that's the whole process. And so to have a part in the code... And so to have a part in the code that says you have to bring it in 30 days prior to the hearing that you want is misleading because they think they're going to get a hearing in 30 days, when that's not true at all. We get 30 days to see if it's even complete before it goes to a hearing. We just want to strike that sentence and get rid of it so that it's not misleading, folks, and we're more aligned with the state process. Any questions on that one?
Good.
All right. Move on. Number 11, uh, simply is re-adding something that somehow got accidentally deleted from our development code. All this says is that a homeowner is responsible for the maintenance on the sidewalk in front of their house. This was part of the code, somewhere it got lost in the code, we're re-adding it into the code. Nothing new, just the same stuff we had before. Any questions on that one?
Counselor Webb.
What about sidewalks that are on the side of their property? Corner lot.
They'd be responsible for maintaining both of them.
Yeah, but you already got fronting in this. Is that an omission?
Well, this is a summary. I don't know if the actual text that we proposed says that. I'd have to go in and take a look. I could, I could do that now if you want, or we can, I can just take it, I can, I can clarify that in the final version to say that any sidewalk fronting a street on your property is your responsibility.
Running a street.
Okay, in some nods. All right, I'll make that.
Good catch, Dale.
Okay, got it. Moving on. Now, number 12, I left this in just in case as a kind of a wild card, we can delete this whole thing if the city council wants to. I know there are big opinions on this subject, but I went ahead and left it just so we could talk about it and to make sure I could get it through the planning commission so that you folks could see what the planning commission wanted to do on the subject. Doesn't mean we have to do it. We can scratch this whole section, move on. What this says is this is the waiver of remonstrance section of our code for sidewalks. And I left this in here. I know we were talking about it, but I left it in anyway. All this says is that if a waiver of remonstrance is filed by an applicant, that the city administrator can agree to that waiver of remonstrance and it wouldn't have to come back to the city council. And so all I've done literally in the code is scratch out the word city council and put city administrator instead. And so that's the extent of the changes we got here. I know we talked ad nauseam about this, so we can certainly ditch it if you want, but I thought I'd leave it so we could talk about it. Any questions on that one?
Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Well, Matt's right. I've stated before that I was against changing this because I felt that if they keep coming to council, we'll be forced to deal with this issue. And we've been kicking this down the road now for the last three, four months. We have another meeting coming up on it. So personally, I'd like to leave it in there until we deal with the issue. I don't know how hard it'd be to change one thing later, but it shouldn't be too hard, I wouldn't think.
Counselor Webb.
I think our role is to provide policy for staff and then let staff administrate. So I, I, I think that's the right way to go. And I, I had a question. You've been using city manager in our document, but we have the city.
Administrator, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's a legal issue or not, but, but.
Always should be city administrator, that's a good catch. I just work in too many darn cities and so I get mixed up, different cities call them different things.
Yeah, I think the previous paragraph had manager in it too, so, um, or section had that, so, but yeah. I, I don't know that we're going to let these things keep going away. We're working on this, JR, I, I think, um.
It sounds like you two are saying the same thing though.
It makes, right now, are we going to deny a waiver? That's, I mean, we haven't denied one, I mean, we've thought about it, but we haven't really denied one because I don't think we have grounds to until we have a policy in place that clarifies that issue for us of when we would, uh, or if we're going to totally get away from it. So I, I think that's more to what council needs to be working on, not taking up council time, giving an affirmative nod every time one of these comes before us. So that's.
We have another one tonight.
Yeah.
Well, what's the council's desire on that one?
Counselor Williams.
I don't really have a comment on that.
Okay. I kind of agree with Counselor Webb. I, I, I think the, this has come up now, um, quite a few times and, you know, I, I think we have a workshop on, on it next Monday night and, um, I, I think our city administrator's very capable of, of, of taking care of the waivers and, and so I kind of agree that, um, these don't have to come to our body every time. That's my opinion, so.
I agree with that, Rick.
Josette.
Well, and ultimately, if you guys decide that you're no longer going to do waivers, the policy will change and we'll administer whatever you guys decide. So it's not, it's not like we're going to have some, we're not going to ever approve someone not meeting the criteria and getting away with it. They'll have to follow whatever criteria council puts in place, so.
Yeah. Okay. So do we have, uh, Counselor Potter, do you have any comments on this or?
Um, I think that we should probably continue to look at this, maybe just keep leaving the dead horse. So I say, let's, uh, continue to look at it.
Counselor Allen.
You know, really, one really reason I, I'm not disagreeing that we have a city administrator who's capable of reading the rules and following it. What I wish is, the first year and a half I was on council, I would have known this was going on and there was a problem. If it would have come to council like it was supposed to have, we could have started on this a year and a half ago or more. That's kind of where it's easy to forget about something if we're pushing it off on somebody else. So that, that was my intent when I said before, I'd like to see them come to us until we deal with it, because every month or so, it's in our face. So that, that's, that's my only issue. So whatever, whatever you guys want to do, I really don't care either way that much. It's just that I don't want to slip, forget about it when other stuff comes up. It's just kind of like when Counselor Webb was dealing with the water issue, we stuck with it till we got it done. This is kind of starting to drag out a little bit and I'm hoping to get some, to resolve it hopefully in the next month or so or two. I know it's a complicated issue, so, um, that's all.
Go ahead, Josette.
Matt, can we just strike it and bring it back at our next change? And that way they'll have the 12th and they'll make whatever policy because potentially they could be making a change to the code that's totally different than what we have right now.
Happy to do that. If that's the desire of the council, that's fine, it's fine with me.
Does that work until you guys actually, because you're talking about it next Monday, so?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. All right, strong pull, thumbs up. I'm moving on. The next one's not quite as much fun. Uh, the city of Vernonia has always kind of set the standard in this state for flood codes. The reasons why are fairly obvious because we have a lot of floods. And so we've always had a fairly up-to-date flood code section. However, fairly recently, FEMA has got together with several states, Oregon being one of them, and FEMA has stopped being vague about how they want to see flood codes written. And so FEMA and the state of Oregon have now come with a model flood code that's really not so much of a model anymore. It's a requirement. And FEMA has required that cities update their codes verbatim with what they want our code to say. They've given us a few small places where, where we're allowed to have some wiggle room, but 90% of what they've given us, they've said we have to adopt it verbatim, otherwise we're in jeopardy of losing, uh, federal funding on the item. So we've changed our code to reflect that. Now, let me be perfectly clear about this. Vernonia has always had a higher bar than FEMA's requirements. Most cities in the state of Oregon say that you have to be one foot above base flood elevation, but Vernonia says you have to be three feet above base flood elevation. So I called the DLCD representative who is specifically in charge of this code and they said, yes, you can absolutely leave that higher bar. We love that higher bar, we wish everybody would do that. Thank you so much, please leave it. And so we did. So we've taken in a lot of their codes, but the higher bar standards we have in the city have remained as part of this. So any questions on this? To give you a little bit more comfort on that, FEMA has indicated that they aren't really changing anything. They said they're adding more detail to the same rules they've always had, but they insist that the rules aren't really changing.
Matt, does it add any cumbersome paperwork or fees to the people trying to build in the floodway?
No, I don't believe it adds any new processes or, just adds a lot of new standard to the processes. So our staff reports and approvals for the, the, those are going to get much longer.
Can you give me an example of the standards you're talking about?
Oh, I don't know that I can. There, um, I, I added this in almost a year ago. I don't have it committed to memory. I'd have to look up the flood code section to see samples. But you can see there's a lot of red ink in the flood code section. Because we've been updating what the, uh, the state wants. Let me go to one here. I've got it on my other screen, I'm, I'm looking at it.
So isn't Ben typically does the floodplain development permit for new buildings in the flood zone? So he would still be doing his same process and there is no added fee?
Correct and correct.
Okay, move on.
Okay, moving on. Okay.
Hold on, Mayor, did I, wasn't he about to read me something?
I was still looking for it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jer.
Do you want to know exactly what the changes are?
Well, I was, he said there was new standards and I apologize, I tried reading this today, I could not get it to open or couldn't find it on my email correctly or something. So he said there was going to be new design standards and I was just kind of wondering example of what those standards would be.
Did you want me to share my screen?
Sure.
Stephanie, do I have the ability to do that?
Yeah, down on the bottom of the big screen.
It's a great app right now.
Click it.
Click down here and it says screen, share my screen down below.
It says to share your screen at the organization to make you a presenter.
All right, hold on, I can do it.
Sorry, hang on, we're working on it, we're getting there.
There you are.
Okay, I see it now, let's, let's, uh, hit that button. All right. Okay, are you guys seeing the, uh, section 905?
There you go.
Yes.
Okay.
Make it bigger.
They've changed simple words like authorization to authority. They've changed some of the language here in the beginning to match FEMA so that all the different cities work the same way. They've added different findings of fact which don't really change what we do, that's just stating why the flood code is, uh, being implemented. They've added their own statement of purpose in there, which is largely the same. So there's a few more items for statement of purpose. Here's, uh, some additional text for the methods for reducing flood losses. And again, this isn't really saying much, the methods for reducing flood losses, because that's not changing how we implement things or our standards. They've revised some definitions, as you can see here. Area of special flood hazard has been revised, uh, base flood elevation has been revised. And again, they're just trying to get all the different cities to be the same. They've defined flood or flooding, let me try to get through these definitions. Highest adjacent grade. We're still in the definition section. The lens to which the chapter applies, you've got some, uh, some new sections in here that talk about severability and compliance, that these weren't there before. There's vehicles now for how to interpret things that aren't clear in that section of the code. Uh, disclaimers, a lot of this stuff doesn't really do much for what we do. The warnings, the disclaimers of liability, these aren't going to change much for our day-to-day processes of permitting structures. Uh, basis is for establishing the special flood hazard area. Again, this is establishing that flooded hazard area. We don't have anything to do with that. FEMA hands that down to us from on high and we accept it. And so this changes that a little bit, but it doesn't really change what we do. So this is floodplain development permit. And it's not adding much there either. It's just added some text about LOMARS and CLOMARS, and that's just for folks who have changed the FEMA flood definition. That's what a LOMAR is, letter of map recognition or a CLOMAR, which is a conditional letter of map recognition. And that just means you've changed the map and the federal government has recognized that you've changed the map and then they go update all their GIS layers. Uh, this designation of the floodplain administrator just says who's supposed to be the administrator? And so we've made that clear here, that was in there before. Uh, other uses of the flood, base flood data, this is other things you can do with the base flood data, and it just kind of adds subdivisions into the mix, which we were already doing. Uh, information that we are, we the city are required to obtain and maintain, we already did all of this, this isn't really changing much else. Community boundaries, you see, a lot of this stuff doesn't change the standards for the, uh, permit itself, it's changing a lot of the other stuff. This defines what happens when you alter a water course and how to alter a water course. Again, that's with a letter of map recognition, which is something we were already doing. Um, this says when you're required to submit new technical data. And you see, there was a section in there before that we had that was from FEMA. Again, our code was very updated before. And so we're not really, uh, changing much as far as substance is concerned. Here's our general standards finally. And you can see they've changed them a little bit, but I think they're going to basically say the same thing. They've added this part here that talks about hydrodynamic and hydrostatic loads that affect the potential buoyancy of the home, how, how much is going to float when the water gets under it? Uh, the construction methods are largely the same, but they've said that you have to actually have to remove air conditioning and heating and electrical up out of the base flood elevation as well, so that when the flood comes, it's not going to impact any of that infrastructure for the home. Again, we had that already. You see, it says here, you can see in the strikeout, electrical, heating, plumbing and air conditioning equipment shall be designed to otherwise stay elevated. Well, this says the same thing, but now they've gotten a little bit more specific with it and added words like hydrostatic and hydrodynamic loads that wasn't in there before, but it's still basically implemented the same way. Uh, the utilities haven't changed very much. Uh, this talks about subdivisions and other new developments and how we're supposed to treat subdivisions. Again, not much as, you see, the strikeout is very similar to the words they've actually added. That might be, oh, there's some more stuff they've changed down here for the, uh, again, how to alter a water course if somebody wants to alter a water course. They've gotten a lot more specific about that. But truth is, if somebody wanted to alter a water course, they would be doing most of that with the federal government anyway and then come to us at the end. We wouldn't be leading the entire process with the federal government blessing it at the end, it's the other way around. So a lot of these requirements they've added in here aren't really requirements to us. After all, they're requirements to the federal government because they're the ones processing the permit. Here's more specific standards, it's more detail on garages. They've added a little bit more detail on manufactured homes. They've added a little bit more detail on manufactured homes. They've added more specifics to floodways, which again, doesn't really pertain much to us. Because in our city, you're not allowed to build in the floodway. Our code says it's specifically prohibited and we've kept that. But other cities will let you build in the floodway if you meet X, Y and Z. So even though we've added this, because we have to stay exactly what FEMA says we have to do, it technically doesn't pertain anyway because you're not allowed to build in a floodway in our city. And this talks about accessory structures and changes there. So does that give you a flavor of kind of what was being proposed?
Yeah, thank you, Matt, and thank you, counsel, for letting me dive into this deeper. I'm sure the rest of you got to read every line of this. I did not. So thanks for letting me go through that. And thanks, Matt, for clarifying a lot of those points. It sounds like mixing words around.
Yeah, it's letting FEMA look like they're bigger than they are. Using fancy words. Okay, so moving on from that. On number 14, the state has required us to add wetland standards. And we started the process, the first thing you're supposed to do, and this is in order to comply with some of the land use planning goals at the state level. And they have a wetland goal. And we started complying with that because we did what was known as a wetland inventory in our city. Well, that's the hardest and most expensive part. In 2011, we went and hired a consulting team to come in and map our wetlands for us, and they did. And we took that base layer, added it to our GIS, gave it to the state. The state updated their GIS and everything was going fine. But for some reason, there was one last small part where we were supposed to then adopt standards on how people are supposed to build near and around wetlands. For some reason, we never took that last step and I'm not quite sure why. So what I did was I'm pushing us across the finish line and adding a bunch of standards here. The standards I'm adding come from the Oregon Model Code for Wetlands. I'm not making any of this up. I'm just telling you what the state says we should have. And what this does is it helps us stay consistent with goal. And now when we do a report to the state, we can say we are goal five compliant because we've implemented the state's model for wetlands. And it just makes things very cut and dry. So let's talk about what that means. What is it? We've got standards in wetlands. What is it even talking about? What that really says is that you have to, when you're building next to a wetland, you have to stay a certain distance away from that wetland so that you don't impact it. Or if you want to go ahead and bulldoze that wetland and get rid of it forever and fill it in with dirt so it's not a wetland anymore, that's fine, but there are standards you have to meet there also. And one of them is that you have to go get the state's permit from the Department of State Lands in order to do that. It's called a fill permit. And they're very specific about the fill permits and quite honestly, they don't grant very many of them. They prefer people avoid wetlands. And this code is very friendly to avoiding wetlands. It just simply adds a setback to putting a building near a wetland. So any questions on that one?
Jer.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah. Boy, getting a state involved in the wetlands, that's almost like guaranteed a no. We've been dealing with trying to build a shop on Columbia Boulevard for three years. That land was promised to build a big shop for our company and it still hasn't happened. And just the red tape is a nightmare, getting nowhere in three years. So my other question to be was the procedure costs now and the procedure costs after if this was to pass to a challenge to wetlands. Do you know what that would be?
A challenge to the Department of State Lands saying that an area is a wetland?
Just to say, I got some wetlands on my property and I want to build a house, but I've got to go through your process now. What's it going to cost somebody?
Well, our process now would be the same as it would be after this code was adopted. The very first thing we would say is we'd say, go to the Department of State Lands and get a permit from them to build on this property. And that happens today. We've just seen Terry Goodrich on two or three different lots try to build near wetlands and we said, go get the Department of State Lands involved first. And he goes and gets them involved and they either bless it or say no. And then it comes back to us, but then we didn't have any standards and that allowed somebody to build next to a wetland. And so now the only difference is we've added a setback. That's really what this comes down to. We didn't have a setback before for how far the building has to stay away. We didn't add a new requirement that says you have to go get the state involved. The state was going to get involved either way.
Yes, okay. And how far is a setback?
I think it's 10 feet. Oh, sorry, 25 feet.
The first thing when I Googled state lands stuff is a procedure cost of $475 just to apply.
With the Department of State Lands, well, that would be just as true today as it would be after this got passed.
So nothing's going to change on that?
Nope.
Okay.
No, because when we did the wetlands inventory and mapped where the wetlands were, we understand that over time, wetlands change. They shrink, they shift, they move over here, they get bigger, they get smaller. And so our GIS layer is really nothing more than a heads up to staff. And if we see that an applicant has a wetland on our GIS layer, we tell them that they might have a wetland on their property. They have to go get it actually mapped and then bring back a map to us from a scientist that says where the wetland really is. Sometimes they come back and they say, our scientists say there is no wetland on this property. We say, great, no problem, build where you want. And our GIS leader was wrong.
Just said, who determined the wetlands in Vernonia to put it on the GIS map?
That was before her time.
We have two. We have the local wetland inventory, I believe, was done in 99. And then we have the state inventory. They're very similar. They vary a teeny bit. So we just uploaded both of those data sets. So the state was one and I'd have to grab my hard copy to see who the firm was that did the local one 20 years ago.
Is that something that our local realtors have access to? So somebody doesn't buy a lot and then get, oh, no, now what do I do? This is wetlands on my place.
Yeah, you can drop down any of the layers on Vernonia map right off the city's website.
That's right.
So they could show something. A lot of the realtors sadly just say owner or buyer to do due diligence with the city. And they force the people to come in here and then we show them the wetland map.
I think there's one for sale right now off Rose Avenue. It looks a little swampy, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, moving on, Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Matt.
Moving on to number 15. Number 15 is a modification to our sign section. And it really came from something that wasn't very clear and we set out to fix it. We thought that projecting signs, which had a definition, were the same thing to staff as a hanging sign. And so we set out to simply remove hanging signs. But our planning commission said, you know what, Matt, we don't agree with you. We don't think those are the same thing. We think those are very different things. So what we did was we modified what we were bringing forward to simply clarify how many hanging signs you were allowed to have. And we're just clarifying it to say one hanging sign is all that's allowed. And that's what our planning commission wanted to do moving forward. And so that's all number 15 is clarifying that you can only have one and not an unlimited number of hanging signs.
Okay.
Okay. Number 16 talks about lottery signs. And we had a number of people come in for a lottery sign permit. And we had to deny them because our sign code doesn't allow you to have more than one sign projecting out or more than one sign in the window. And this created kind of an uncomfortable tension for poor Josette because there were a lot of businesses that had lottery signs already. We had to deny some permits while others were approved. And after we talked about it a lot at the staff level and talked about it a lot at the planning commission, we kind of came to the conclusion that a lottery sign is a state sign. It's owned by the state. The state gives them to the establishments to put up. And we figured since it was a state level sign, we probably didn't have any role getting involved with that anyway. And so what we're proposing to do here is simply add lottery signs to a list of exemptions in our sign code. So that if somebody wants to put up a lottery sign, they don't need a sign permit from us. A lottery sign is exempt from the need for a permit. And they can just put it up because we feel like we don't have any place in telling the state what they can and can't do. And so that was our approach to that.
I have a question. Is that inside the business or outside? What if they wanted to put a giant 19-foot lottery sign up on the outside and it was so bright you couldn't see the drive-through? I think we'd have something to say about that.
It's a good question and it's our understanding that the state has certain requirements for their own lottery signs and they wouldn't allow any to be that. There's a couple on Bridge Street there today. And it's our understanding from the state that's as big as you can get them. And they're pretty big, to be fair. They've got 25 inches by 25 inches, I think. But that's the biggest the state's going to let you put up.
So is it inside or outside permitted?
We wouldn't care anymore because a lottery sign inside or outside isn't subject to our sign requirements. So we would just dismiss it either way, but they can go both ways, inside or outside.
So Matt, the other thing I think is that I think the state highway code prohibits it from being along the state highway perpendicular to the highway on the outside of a building because it's seen as advertising. So that's why I believe Ernie's is in his window. It's like in the window showing through. It's not jetting out from the building up top. Because that's
We just lost the connection there.
Lost your audio there for a bit, Josette.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
So the state highway prohibits advertisement signs from being perpendicular with the highway as far as like the state thing. So that's why Ernie's is in his window. And Black Bear just has it in the window, not jetting out from the building. So that's already kind of, they're already restricting it on the highway plus ODOT size restriction. Are you hearing me?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're ready to move on, Matt.
Okay, we're hitting the home stretch, guys. This is number 17. We're moving on. 17 out of 20. We didn't have any requirements in our code for murals, like wall murals that can get painted. We didn't allow them or not allow them. We were just silent on them. And we wanted to clarify that. What we've done is we've added some clarification to say that you can do a wall mural and you don't need a sign permit for it. But in the event that you actually do it, we added a couple of requirements. A, you have to get the owner's permission to do it. Kind of speaks for itself. And B, it can't be advertising anything. Because then as soon as you put the Coca-Cola bear holding a Coca-Cola bottle, you've crossed over from art and being a mural to a giant advertisement that is now in violation of our sign size requirements. So all we've said is no permit required. Get the owner's permission. Can't be an advertisement. And that's all we did. Any questions on that one? Okay, moving on.
What about lewd? What if lewd or nude?
We thought about that. Lewd, nude, offensive, drug signs, naked people. You know, when it came to First Amendment, we didn't want to get involved. We felt that that was a self-correcting problem. Because if somebody put a couple of naked girls on the side of their building, then everybody in the community would go to that business and say, what in the world are you doing? Get rid of that offensive art. And then the owner would take steps to remove that. And that would be something that could get fixed without the government getting involved.
Facebook shaming might work.
There you go. That's the idea. That's the idea. Okay, so moving on to that one. On number 18 is we were putting in a sign. I believe it was at the trail. The city wanted to put in a sign at a trailhead that said all the different businesses that were in town, so the folks could see what the businesses were. The sign that was supposed to be put in was far exceeding our sign code permit. And so Josette came to me and she said, hey, Matt, can we add a requirement in there that says basically the sign doesn't, or the city doesn't have to worry about this. And the city can put in signs that are bigger than our code allows. And I said, sure, no problem. And I brought that to my planning commission and they slaughtered me. They just ripped me apart. They said, why in the world would we give the city an exemption where other people don't get the exception? They said, instead, what we'd rather do is add a requirement that allows an extraordinary circumstance. And it basically says you're allowed to have a sign that is bigger than the code says if you have an extraordinary circumstance. But in that event, you've got to go to the planning commission to get their permission for this larger sign. And you have to meet these new criteria that were added in order to have that bigger sign. So could the city still apply for their larger sign at the trail and could it still be approved? Sure, but we'd have to satisfy those criteria moving forward. But then anybody could put in that bigger sign as long as there was an extraordinary circumstance moving forward.
Josette.
So I have a little concern with this because the signs for the park entrances have already been purchased. And so if the planning commission tries to stop the city from putting in the kiosks at each park, we're going to have a big problem.
I have no response to that.
Because I don't really know, I think most of them, I mean, we're not going to be put it so in theory, the sign that says welcome to Vernonia by the lake would not be allowed if this goes through as the criteria. Right?
You would have to add, you would have to apply for the extraordinary circumstance exception. And then you'd have to satisfy those criteria.
Right, but I think based on the criteria, if I'm reading it right, Matt. Let me, I'm trying to find my copy of the saying. Hold on.
It says this is essentially a variance process, but without the need for the required extraordinary circumstance to be specifically related to something physical on the property. So right now, if you want to do a variance, you'd have to say something's wrong with my property so that people can't see my sign. I've got a big berm. I've got a big ditch. This gets rid of that and you would be allowed to come in and give some different reason. Like this is going to be giving the entire community a benefit. And so therefore you should pass it. Or if a new developer came to town and wanted, came to town and wanted to put a Hollywood sign up on the hills like you see in LA. Well, they'd say that's an exceptional circumstance and here's 16 reasons why it's a good idea. And the planning commission can say, we agree with you, approved. And they can at least then apply for that different sign. And so it doesn't need to have something wrong with the land anymore. It blurs those lines and allows it really up to discretion of the planning commission.
Right, that's my fear is that we're trying to kind of network and be part of these kiosks and like informational things at the different parks and such. And now we're going to have to go through the planning commission and whether or not they like the idea. That's how it kind of feels when I don't know that I don't know.
I hear you, but this is what your planning commission wanted. I'm just bringing it forward.
I know. I'm hoping council is like
Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, and most of these things, it's the city council has the final say. So a lot of things go to the planning commission, but then they come to us. So it seems like they're kind of asserting some authority to themselves here. Yeah, I mean, I guess the bottom line is if we were getting bucked in the planning commission, we would have you revisit this right away and remove it if we didn't agree with their decisions.
Because like all the currently, all the signs in like Hawkins Park and Anderson Park, those are all way oversized. So what if we're replacing, basically what we're doing is upgrading and replacing all of those kiosks that don't fit the code but existed? So how does it address that?
Well, we can strike what the planning commission added and go back to the original, which was that city signs are an exemption to the sign code. Plain and simple.
Because we're never going to put something in without the council approving it. You know, as far as like the, we're replacing the kiosks. If we were to do it now, we could have, what, the maximum would be 32 square feet or 24?
Oh, I don't have that committed to memory.
I think it's 32.
Is it 32?
I think it's 32.
So that's a sheet of plywood. And these kiosks with the And these kiosks with the tops are a bit wider than six feet. There's at least six feet, most of them. So we're already be fighting to get something, even just to replace what exists, we're gonna be having to go to planning commission to fix what's deteriorating. Uh, this seems weird, but whatever you guys decide.
Counselor Williams.
I can take them all to planning commission.
I, I, I think the problem that we have here is a concern that maybe uh, a sign might, uh, block visibility near a stop sign or something like that. Uh, but when you're at the park, you drive into the park, nobody wants to look at a sign that's like the size of a no parking sign. I mean, if it's the park and there's swings and trees and stuff like at the lake or wherever, you, you want a sign that's big enough to see, but you just have to take into consideration, you can't be blocking traffic or creating a hazard. It's, it's not like a, a, a sign on the front of a business on bridge. We're, we're talking about two different animals altogether.
Right. That's why I wanted for the city to be exempt from it because we do already have these existing ones that are way bigger.
Much.
That don't have extenuating extreme measures or whatever.
JR, go ahead. Your, your audio is not working, JR. Can't hear you. Try it again. Lost the connection.
Try logging back in and maybe that'll fix it.
Yeah, I think he's going to.
Yeah, there you go. Go ahead, Dale.
I mean, I, I mean, I definitely agree with Josette. I mean, and, and some of the, that one sign at the lake, it's actually on the side of the restroom. Uh, so I mean, there's no blocking of view or anything. I can't think of one, where the one is. It Hawkins, but, um.
Great when you come in.
Is it kind of right?
And it doesn't have a very, it's not the Glen Hawkins sign. It's a kiosk that doesn't have much on it, but with our new plan of posting the hours and the top ten rules and then the website of where to get it, we have more information we're trying to hit with these kiosks than we had in the past. We're not gonna list the forty-seven rules. We're gonna do more kind of informative stuff, but.
I mean, we, we gotta have signs. I mean, you gotta, I mean, and you gotta have, there's probably a code on how big the font can be, you know? You can't be so small that people can't read it. So uh, from a reasonable distance and then try to enforce anything. So, um. I, I, I mean, I understand the other thing is we're imposing on the businesses and then uh, then we're kind of going outside of our own rules. So it's kind of hypocritical in a way, but I, but there's, there's, there's cause. Um, I don't know if you can make the same argument for a business that they need to have the rules of their business posted on the outside of their building for all to view before they enter, you know? I don't know about that. So, um. I don't know. I think it might be better. I don't know if the planning commission was gonna deny you, but I, it just seems like the rigmarole to go through that it's, I mean, personally, if they care, start denying our signs, I'm gonna be advocating to take that power back away from them. So kind of seems to be a mute point. My opinion.
Grant.
Well, I think we need to keep in mind there's a difference in the purpose of the signs. A business has a sign with their name on it, maybe some hours, but a park sign or a city sign like at the lake, uh, there, there's a lot more involved, um, in the signs. So I mean, you gotta have different criteria for a different kind of sign.
Yeah, I think that in the sign code, it does have different criteria, but the informa, I forget which one it is. Um, but the one that the park signs fit in still has about thirty-two square foot maximum. Cause it's, it falls into and I'll have to, I'm, I gotta pull up Title IX separately because the draft version's confusing me, but. If JR can talk now, I'll look it up.
Go ahead, JR.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I apologize for all that. Um, I, I hope I didn't miss something, but my thought on the planning commission, although I, I appreciate the, uh, the work they do. Um, but something that's for the public domain. Uh, I feel the council is elected by the people. Then they're probably, you know, their feet are held to the fire a little more than, uh, the planning commission that can come and go fairly quickly at times. So I would tend to, to lean toward, um, if there's an exemption on a sign, it should come to council. Those people are elected by the people to make those decisions and they're held accountable of, by, by their votes, you know? So, um, or, or to both. I wouldn't really have a problem with both. I know it adds a more asshole. I don't like special rules for the city, but I see the need for it for the general good of the people and that's what the council's elected for. So that's my thought on it. And, and Mr. Williams was on, uh, Counselor Williams was on the planning commission. So I'd like to hear his thought of what I just said right there.
Uh, when I was on the planning commission, we weren't challenging the city council.
Well, I wasn't talking about challenging. I'm just talking about the re, the bigger responsibility and held accountable, you know, what's gonna happen to someone at the planning commission if they want to approve or deny anything really? Ultimately, I guess the council could change it anyway. So I don't.
My understanding always was that we were to bring recommendations to the council. I don't remember ever discussing the fact that we would, uh, tell the city council what to do. That, that wasn't, I, I don't remember that ever happening.
Okay. Thank you, Grant.
Yeah.
So how, how do you, the council wishes to suggest we move on forward with this? Counselor Webb?
Well, I think I heard three options here. One is just to exempt city signs from this process. Uh, the other i- is leave it how it's written. And then I just heard a third there from Grant that you could, it'd be an addition with that this goes to the planning commission with a recommendation to council. That would be a change from the present form that as presented. Um, so if we got into, if we got into that scenario where they were denying it and we're like, uh, you know, like the CZ trail signs, we're committed, you know? We've already committed to do this. Uh, we voted to do this as a council. So, uh, you know, we'd have to object to that. And, um, I mean, you know, I, I don't know. I, I personally, I just think we shouldn't exempt the city signs.
Counselor Williams.
Dale, I think you might have misunderstood me. I don't think that the planning commission should have the authority to say yes or no. Uh, I agree that, uh, if we're gonna put a new sign up, it should come before the council. And there, there might be a reason, a good reason why somebody says that's not a good idea. We need to talk about it. But I, I, I wouldn't want the planning commission telling us what to do.
My opinion. Oh, go ahead.
Just a response to that, Grant. I mean, I'm, I'm always in favor of committees or the planning commission.
Yeah.
Giving us recommendations and, and uh, another set eyes on things never hurts, but I think in this case, just a simple exemption from that. It, I think we're just adding a layer of bureaucracy here.
Well, if there's an exemption and a requirement to come before the council, that way we're in agreement with the city government. I mean, we, we come to a conclusion, uh, consensus with all of us.
I think, I think we're trying to think down the line too, uh, Counselor Webb about, we're not, no one's saying Josette doesn't have good judgment, but one day we won't be here, she won't be there. I'm trying to think long-term, you know, give council a say on what big sign goes up wherever, you know? Of course, like any council can change any rules they want at any time. So.
Go ahead, Josette.
So I just wanna say that, um, we should, I'm okay. I mean, I agree that council should, should see the sign if it's gonna be, and if it's not gonna follow sign code. So I'm not coming to you guys with a stop sign or a street sign or a no access sign, but it's something that's um, an oddball or something that does not fall within sign code. Cause I don't wanna trust, I mean, that kind of stuff seems kind of goofy. So just the big ones that don't, you know, aren't in a category of sign code or meeting sign code, I guess.
Counselor Webb.
So, and I don't think you'd wanna come to us with just replacement of an already outsized sign like you're doing in the parks now. Uh, it, it'd be a new sign that doesn't meet the city standard.
Right.
So can we come to a consensus to, um, sounds like we could come to a consensus to, what am I trying to say? I'm getting tired.
Uh, I think you've come full circle and come back to our original recommendation that we brought to the planning commission was that if a city sign exceeds the standards listed in the code for any reason, it has to go to the city council for permission.
Okay.
Easy. Okay.
Why didn't we do that sooner?
Moving on then.
Okay.
Uh, we only got two left and they're pretty easy. Uh, number nineteen is simply, uh, updating some of our home occupations and we're making this a little bit clearer. This isn't based on something that came up in our city. This is based on my personal experience working for other cities where this has become a real problem fairly recently. And what it does is it clarifies dispatching as a home-based business. And what we're saying is it's okay to have a dispatch business from your home as long as you are the only person behind a desk dispatching vehicles to do anything. But what's not allowed is for those vehicles to be at your home and then leave your home and come back to your home and reside at your home as part of your home occupation. Cause then all the employees are converging on your property daily to get in these cars. You might have an ambulance dispatch service. An ambulance is racing at your house with lights going. So we're simply clarifying that you're not allowed to have a dispatch service where the vehicles are at your home.
Counselor Allen.
Matt, would a dispatch service be of commercial use?
Yes.
Okay. Cause the downtown zone, you said if you had a commercial use, you couldn't go back to residential.
Home occupations are a little bit different. If you have a single-family home in the downtown zone that wants to do a home occupation, then you're allowed to do that. And that wouldn't be you crossing the line and going over to a commercial business. And a great example of that is, I had a fellow. I'm sorry, go ahead.
A commercial business would be retail open to the public then?
Right. And that's the, the differentiating factor. We had a gentleman in the downtown zone who wanted to open his garage to sell board games and puzzles. And we said, wait a minute, you're allowed to sell board games and puzzles online from your home. But the minute somebody comes to your home to look at a game, you're open for a retail business and that's not permitted. Unless you want to cancel your home and open as a retail business, but then you've crossed that line and you can't be a home anymore. And to be clear, you could even have a mixed use in the downtown zone where you live above and have a business down below. That's fine. But then you couldn't ever become exclusively single-family again.
Okay, JR.
Uh, we lost you, Matt.
I could try again. All we were saying is that, uh, if, if somebody has a mixed use in the downtown zone, they live above their shop, then that's allowed. And you just couldn't go back to a sole, single-family use in the downtown zone again. But this is actually somewhat different from that.
Okay. I get it. Thank you.
Grant.
This is a lousy example, but I'm gonna use it anyway. We're talking about the difference between running a cab company with a bunch of, uh, cabs owned by one guy running out of a house versus say somebody who has a Uber business and the drivers are never at his house. We're talking about, we're talking about that kind of a distinction.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on. The last one is again, one of those things where we told the DLC that we were gonna come back and revisit what they wanted a little bit later. And this is us now revisiting this. Previously, the state said that we had to make some changes to accessory dwelling units. We had a rule that said you have to, uh, have an extra parking space and they have to be owner occupied. Well, two years ago, the state said you can't do that anymore. And we already fixed that in the code. That ship already sailed. It's approved. It's done. But at that time, they said, there's a few more changes we'd love you to make. And so this is those extra changes we're talking about right now. And specifically what they say is that, uh, we are removing any size limitations to an accessory dwelling unit. Before, an accessory dwelling unit couldn't be bigger than eight hundred square feet. That's what our code says now. The, the state wants us to remove that and allow accessory dwelling units to be as big as they want. Now you might be asking the question, well, Matt, what happens if my house is a thousand square feet? And I build an ADU that's twelve hundred square feet? Well, we would simply swap them at that point. And the twelve hundred square feet would become the primary use. Your existing one thousand square feet would just be an accessory use. But this allows, uh, for a lot more flexibility in building accessory dwelling units. Any questions on that one?
What about the height requirement?
The height limit right now is, yeah, right now we have a, an extra height limit for ADUs. We're removing that. And so the only height limit that would be on an ADU moving forward is whatever the zone says.
What's our zone say downtown?
Uh, downtown doesn't have a height limit.
Well, it could be five hundred feet tomorrow. We can start building skyscrapers, ADUs.
You bet. But in residential, it's, uh, thirty-five feet, I believe.
Why is the state pushing?
Accessory dwelling unit if you wanted to, if this went through.
I just wonder why the state keeps pushing this so much where they want to take off all restrictions, even if they are good restrictions. It seems like it's gonna get a point where they're gonna be sorry and we're gonna be sorry at some point if it really takes off. I don't think it's really taken off yet, but.
Yeah, it's all about affordability. The state thinks that this is going to make, uh, more units cheaper. And that's what they want is lower rents, uh, more affordable housing.
State to quit charging fees for everything and adding thirty thousand to a cost of a house. That would help.
It would.
Matt, I got a question. I- isn't the height requirement, uh, you gotta be thirty-five feet or less in the downtown area?
I don't think so.
Did I read that wrong in the code? Did I read that wrong in the code?
I don't believe, let me go to it real quick. Hang on.
I thought it was a thirty-five foot limit.
Let me try to find it.
Remember a discussion when you're talking downtown, we were talking, we couldn't go over three stories, but.
Well, three stories with the flat roof would be thirty feet.
I mean, it seems nuts to take away any kind of requirement for height to build a birdhouse eighty feet high.
I'm just as outraged.
I'm being silent. I'm scrolling to it right now.
I'm just as outraged that they're taking away the parking requirement because I know it's after that. You know? But we can't change what the state's mandating. That's just the way it is.
So the the limit is thirty-five feet, but it can be increased ten more feet when housing is provided above the ground floor.
Hmm, that's right.
What was it again? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
The limit is thirty-five feet. But if you're adding housing above the ground floor, it's increased by ten feet. So forty-five feet.
Okay, because this just said remove all height requirements.
No, remove all height requirements specific to an ADU. Right now, our code says an ADU can't be taller than X feet. We're just going to get rid of that. And so that will leave you to comply with whatever the zone says. That's all.
Okay, okay, that clarifies it for me.
Okay, any other questions for Matt on twenty? If not, I'd like to move on and open the hearing up to a public testimony. Does any member of the public wish to speak or present testimony on this agenda item? If not, I will close this hearing right now at nine thirty-five PM. And I will thank Matt Straight for all his data and all the work he did on this. And there's a lot of information and and thank you so much, Matt, for answering the questions to the best of your ability. And and I, boy, there's a lot to cover here in two hours, this hearing. So moving on, does any councillor have any questions for the staff or wish to present to us on on this? Any further? Councillor Webb.
So how are we going to move forward on this? Because we've made some changes in our document tonight. So do we have to get those or are we going to have to note those in our motion?
Note them in the motion to move forward, or you can have me bring it back with the changes made. None of this is really on fire. We don't have any applicants that are waiting for this to happen. So if you want me to revise it and bring it back, we can do that.
I would be in favor of that.
Sounds like we have a general consensus from the council to not make a motion tonight, but to to do some revisions on this, Matt, and bring it back to us a later date.
So can you table it to the next meeting?
We can make a motion to table this to the next meeting, yes.
You would do it during the ordinance part of it. You're still in council deliberation. Clarifying.
Stephanie, when's the next city council meeting?
Nineteenth.
Okay. Now we're still in deliberations. Stephanie or?
Yeah, JR has his hand up.
Oh, JR, go ahead. You're muted.
And Matt, I had a quick question about the mandates from the state. I remember the population kicked in on some of these rules. We were under the twenty-five hundred on some of these. Can you explain to council what's some of these mandates we really don't have to do because we're under twenty-five hundred?
Oh, sure. Matter of fact, number twenty, which we were just talking about, none of those are state mandated. You guys can say, no, thank you. We want to leave the ADU as it is. And that's totally okay. It's legal and acceptable. We're only acting on what the DLCD asked us to do, but they weren't, they don't have any grounds to force it. Unlike removing the parking space and owner occupancy, we didn't have a choice there. On this one, we we have all the choice in the world. And so you guys are not handcuffed by the state in any way on this one. If you don't think this is a good idea, we can just delete this out and strike it and stay with the AD standards we have now.
Yeah, I would actually be in favor of striking number twenty since we don't have to do it because it changes the whole size of it to almost unlimited. Except for, of course, lot requirements. But I don't know why we'd want to get into something that we don't have to do unless we all think it's a great idea.
So can I say one thing? The only flip side of it is an ADU currently has to be no bigger than a third the size of the home. Is that right, Matt?
Uh, let me go to it.
Well, it has a third the size of the home and not more than like some five hundred square feet, six, what is it?
It says the maximum size of an ADU may be thirty-three percent of the living area of the house or eight hundred and eighty square feet, whichever is less.
Right. So the only flip side of allowing people to build them is more money on the tax rolls. If they're allowed to build one that's, because like, if you have a fifteen hundred square foot home, you're only going to be able to build a five hundred square foot ADU the way our code currently says it. And who's going to do that? But if you had the opportunity to build, say, an eight hundred square foot, like, little mill house next to your house, that might be something that brings in more money because the tax assessment on that is going to be better than a double, basically, shed. I don't know. Just saying.
Councillor Webb.
And you said the threshold is twenty-five hundred people? Population?
Once we pass over twenty-five hundred people, there are a lot of different rules that apply to the city. Not a lot. There are six or seven.
One particularly would come into play, so I don't know how close we are to that number.
No, to make it perfectly clear, even this one we're talking about, this wouldn't be required even if we were over twenty-five hundred. Once we pass over twenty-five hundred, we're not allowed to say you can't have an ADU. Right now, we are allowed to say that. If we wanted to scratch the whole ADU section and say, forget about that, no ADUs in our city, that would be allowed. That's legal. But once we're over twenty-five hundred, we can't say that anymore. We have to allow an ADU anywhere where a single family home is permitted. But even then, we are allowed to have standards. And the standards we have would be completely acceptable, even if we had more than twenty-five hundred people in the city.
So we're at twenty-two eighty-one. With twenty-four homes going in on Louisiana or whatever.
Yeah.
It's also going to change some other stuff with our housing, but we don't need to get into that tonight. Some other things will change once we hit twenty-five hundred. We'll have to put some of our big boy pants on at that point and start changing some stuff.
Okay, any other deliberation?
Well, can I get a crossbow consensus on what Mr. Allen suggested? I I only heard him suggest it. I didn't hear that the rest of our council agreed.
Says to promote Portland ideals. So if we're for that, and we just say we want to promote Portland ideals and move forward. But I don't want to promote Portland ideals, not on this one until we have to, because it seems like every time they want us to do something, there's bad stuff that comes with it. That's just my thought, unless somebody can convince me that bigger is better. We haven't built one yet that I know of.
You know, councillor Allen, when I wrote this, I I knew you were going to say that. To your credit, you're good and predictable. I'll give you that.
To clarify, we are building an ADU right now.
Yeah.
Well, there, it didn't stop someone from wanting to do it then by making it bigger and bigger. It just seemed to me if you make it bigger, where are you going to park? There's no parking requirement. So if you can't park next to your house, where are you going to park? You can park out there in front of Webb's house, or maybe in front of that lady that just called down today. Park right in front of her alley again, and then the cops are going to have to leave the mini mart. And that was a joke.
Dale.
Yeah, you know, I can't remember which council it was that passed this ADU. I don't remember us having that discussion that we didn't have to do it. I thought it was kind of getting rammed down our throat at that time. So I mean, that kind of changes the perspective a little bit. I think it was previous council that approved this. But my memory is short. So I mean, that's the only other thing is something that's already been done. We would be reversing the previous decision. So I'm a little wary of doing that, but I'm I'm not too far off from JR on, I was, I was never really never really liked this ADU idea, idea, especially when they start jerking the the parking away, you know, that that to me is just a huge issue in a small town. We're not Portland, you know, we don't have parking structures and stuff to accommodate that. And then you get neighborly conflicts. And well, and we, like you said, you had somebody here tonight, parking issue. I don't know. I don't know where to go with it now. I didn't know we had that option.
Well, I don't know that you have the option to remove it because you currently have someone using the code to build one.
Yeah, yeah.
But you don't have to agree to the sizing.
This was just a revising. The way I understand this, am I wrong, Matt?
Correct. No, that's correct. And we can just leave the code the way it is now, and that's fine, too.
Right, that's the way I understood. Thank you.
So, but our code. Okay, but the state said we can't do the parking requirement. That's separate.
If you allow ADUs, you can't allow extra parking, period, regardless of the size of your city. That's true.
Okay. Too many calls.
That's done.
Councillor Williams, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I remember when we talked about this on the commission, planning commission. We talked about clusters. We talked about the ADUs. But we we weren't thinking big places. We were, we were thinking of little places behind a house where grandma could live. So when we, when we start going, well, we can make an ADU that's bigger than the main house and we'll just flip it. That's kind of contrary to all the things we talked about, Matt. We were thinking small structures. We were thinking little community, maybe shaped like a horseshoe with small, like cabins.
But that's the cottage cluster part of the zone, right?
Right, right.
Totally different. And that's different than the ADU. An ADU is just an accessory dwelling unit next to a primary residence.
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
My main point is we were thinking smaller as opposed to larger. But that was a couple.
Delete twenty, and I'm comfortable with that. If that's what the council wants, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Is that the consensus of the council?
Can we think about it and bring it back when we meet the next time and we talk about it? We make a final decision then? Instead of making it right now before we think about it, Labor?
Well, because, but you're tabling just the ordinance coming back to you. If you're going to re-discuss it, you got to table like the whole thing, right?
You have to continue, yeah, to a date certain, and then we have to talk about it again at that point. Which we can do also. If you guys want to continue this till the nineteenth, I can revise all the stuff you told me to revise, bring it back to you on the nineteenth, and then we could just discuss it again. And heck, even if you wanted to on that night, you can adopt the ordinance that night or do the first reading of the ordinance that night and then do a second reading some other night if you want. You've got a lot of options.
That was my thought.
We can continue this for discussion to the nineteenth. Sure.
Rick, will you poll your council on how many want to continue it?
Yes. How many want to continue this discussion on number twenty? One, two, three. JR says no, probably, huh?
It already passed, so we'll continue.
Yeah. Well, if there's no other deliberation, would anyone like to make a motion? For Matt? To make revisions on the the previous nineteen changes on this, and then we'll discuss twenty at the next meeting. Stephanie, go ahead. Maybe help me out a little bit here.
So it would be a motion to continue deliberation on ordinance number nine three two to April nineteenth to allow staff to make revisions requested.
Thank you. Is there a motion to continue on with the revisions? Councillor Webb.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue the discussion on ordinance nine three two allowing staff to make revisions. And the date for the next meeting would be April nineteenth. Do I get it all in there?
Yes, I think so.
Thank you, Councillor Webb. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Councillor Potter seconded that. Would you call the roll, please, seventy?
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Councillor Webb.
Hi.
Councillor Williams.
Hi.
Councillor Allen.
Hi.
Councillor Potter.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, seventy. Thank you, Matt Straight.
Thank you, Matt.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks, if not sooner.
Good. You got it.
Have a good evening. Number ten, cassette agenda for acceptance. Cassette agenda for approval. City council work session meeting minutes for March eighth, two thousand twenty-one. City council meeting minutes for March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Any discussions or questions for those two meeting minutes?
I have a question. It says that I was absent, but in reading through everything, I was voting. I might have been late. Maybe I had problems with my computer or something, but I was at that meeting on the fifteenth.
You were absent for that vote. You got here after that vote was taken.
Oh, okay.
Up above in councillors in attendance that you were late.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry I missed that.
That's fine.
Okay, any discussions or questions? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept these two meeting minutes? Councillor Webb.
I'll move to accept the agenda, consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
So moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please, seventy?
Councillor Potter.
Hi.
Councillor Williams. Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Unfinished business, Staff Report, Follow Up on Request for Title IX Criteria. Found on page 21.
So, Joseph. Um, an update to you guys that you had requested at the previous hearing, um, whether or not you could include in the criteria of a land use action that the uh, person or applicant be present. And then I included the response we got from legal and DLCD that you cannot require someone be present as part of the criteria for accepting a decision um, because it's not a substantive requirement, and those are the things that um so we checked out that for you guys, but we can't legally say the applicant has to be present as part of a criteria for approval.
Okay, thank you, Joseph. Are there any questions for Joseph on that matter?
No.
Okay. Moving on to new business then, waiver of remonstrance request. Steeple can be found on page 22 and 23.
Not sure if you guys want us to present this one or if you just want to read it. Um, I put this one in, briefly explain it. This one was put in your packet by me. Um, it's part of my intake process if they want to have a waiver of remonstrance or install their sidewalks. Mr. Steeple actually demoed an old house and is putting in a manufactured home. The previous house did not meet setbacks, um, so he's actually bringing everything into compliance. Having demoed that house and building a new one, so. We like this project.
Good. Counselor Allen?
Seems like our previous council, we sent one back because it wasn't in the right form. Is is there a form for someone to fill out, or, because when they wrote this, they didn't say waiver of remonstrance on the form, on their handwritten request here. Just says waiver to installing.
So previously previously, they had not only not stated, they just wanted a waiver to requirements. They didn't state what it was, or they didn't want to have to put in the requirements. They didn't say anything about a waiver, and it also wasn't submitted by the property owner.
Oh, right, okay, that's right. It wasn't the property owner. I I mean, I understand what she's saying here, and I don't have a problem doing it, just I didn't see the word remonstrance in here anywhere. Didn't know if there was a city form they had to fill out and sign, or.
No, there's not.
Letter is their form. That's what it requires in the code is then to write a letter requesting a waiver to the requirement of installing sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
So then how does, Joseph, maybe you can clarify this for me. How does this get attached to the deed then?
Uh, because we have a form that uh we have a waiver of remonstrance document that's a formal recorded document, once you guys approve it, that we put who the person is, what the requirements are, that they'll do it when it happens, that they'll participate in bringing them up to code when the city does it, um, and that gets recorded. So this is the first step. We have a formal recorded document that goes on the deed.
Right, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
What's the, uh, Counselor Webb?
So I'm assuming this meets all the requirements for a waiver of remonstrance. There's no sidewalks within a certain distance and okay, want to make sure, we don't want to waive one when they're got a sidewalk adjacent to them.
How does the council want to move forward with this uh written application, I, if you will? Counselor Webb?
I'll make a motion to accept the waiver of remonstrance request from Sibley. I don't know if I needed an address.
9563.
So stated.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Uh, Counselor Potter?
Aye.
Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next item in new business is library recommendation for two prospective um library board members, Karen Lehman and Bill Holloway. And those uh, applications can be found on page 24 through 26. They were unanimously approved by the library board, um, brought together. Uh, this brought to our attention from Corey Colburn. He's on the committee. And uh, they were approved by their board in in March, and so has every everyone read their applications?
I read them. They seemed very well to me. Uh, Karen and Bill look like they'd be a good fit, so I have no issues.
Good.
I'm good.
Looks like we have a general consensus. Oh, Lorna, have you been able to attend any uh library meetings yet?
Not yet. It's on my agenda.
Okay. I was on that uh I was in Lays on the last two years. I really enjoyed that group, and it's good experience. So um it looks like I have the general consensus of the council, so at this time, it's my it's my uh, honor and to appoint Karen Lehman and Bill Holloway to the city library board meeting, so congratulations. Um, doesn't look like we have either uh, applicants here tonight, but um congratulations to them, and I I know that board uh, will will uh do well with those two applicants, so. Congratulations. Next item is open air market request, 2021. So, Joseph.
Special events permit requested by Brett Costley for open air market season to start in May and run on Saturdays at the Old Health Center. I did talk to them. They're planning on having the fire department uh, blast the slab, and then I did talk to Brett about that the paint around the edge didn't get painted last year, and so he's gonna pick up yellow paint from us and do that prior to the start of the season.
That's good.
Okay.
That's two years in a row. I wasn't gonna vote for this unless there was some movement on that. It was a safety concern we brought up, two years in a row. So, Joseph, you think it'll be done this time before they start?
Yes.
They need some help?
Maybe. I mean, it's really Brett and a couple of the, it's been kind of small lately, um, as far as vendors. And so I think he's kind of trying to be the organizer and do what's required, so he's kind of a lone wolf, but.
Can we notify them that we're gonna have a kind of a citywide cleanup day on the 17th, uh, week from Saturday, and that might be something that we could all pitch.
Sure.
I go by today, and boy, that whole slab is just full of concrete and it's all different kinds of stuff. It's a mess down there, but.
Yeah, it got a ton of leaf debris from the trees adjacent to it. They just dumped everything in the windstorm on top of the slab, so it looks pretty hairy, but we can easily notify them.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion to approve this application for the open air market group? Counselor Williams?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for the open air market.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Potter seconded.
Thank you, Counselor Potter. Motion was made and seconded. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Counselor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Stephanie. Jamboree Request, 2021. Can be found on page 3233. Go ahead, Joseph.
So uh, the head of jamboree, Roger Smith, is on uh, the call. If you have questions.
I don't have any questions, but I'm elated that Rogers move, and this group is moving forward. I think this town needs it, and I commend them and hope we can help in any way we can.
Ro-Roger, do you wish to share some information with the council? There you go.
Well, we're just trying to to put it together. We'll see if we can get vendors to support it. Now, it's really what generates the funding for it is that, it's sponsorship, and it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of opportunity for for sponsorship right now. And the companies just are not willing to to donate money to anything right now. So, we're struggling to to fund, we have we have the capital to do it this year, but if we don't get some sort of sponsorship, I don't know what we're gonna do for next year. So we're trying to come up with ways to come up with some money or to make some money, but other than that, you know, it's, we're trying to put it together. Hopefully, we can put something together.
Thank you, Roger. Counselor Webb?
Roger, what's it cost to put on uh, even a smaller version of the jamboree?
Uh, I guess it depends on what you mean by small.
Well, if you don't do, you don't still cost them, uh, still costs money. It's it's five, eight, $10,000 each kind of.
Well, uh, the current setup costs us about 20. Uh, you know, with porta potties and insurance and parks and rental fees and all, you know, all of the stuff, large sums of money that that all add up, you know, and it depending on what you want to cut out, whether it's, you know, whether it's a softball tournament or the logging show, or you know, porta potties and how many porta potties we use it. It all just depends. We've you know, over the last year, we've thrown around a whole bunch of options and you know, as of late, we've come up with, hopefully, we can do the majority of the jamboree this year. Um, and we'll see, we'll see where it lands. Um, yeah, it just depends on what we cut.
So right, so right now, the jamboree pays for the fees associated with the softball tournament. It's kind of intermingled. I think in the past, we were under the understanding that the softball tournament members paid all of that, but what we're finding out is that that's rolled into jamboree as an expense as well.
Yeah, it's all, it's all one pocket. It all comes out of, it all comes in and out of the same pocket, so.
Right, well, I think the understanding
Yes.
From prior years was that the softball tournament functioned as its own thing um, separate from the fees and stuff, like the the softball tournament actually paid the fees, but now we understand it's all jamboree money that pays for all of it.
That's correct, yeah. It's all under the same 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization.
Counselor Webb, you had your hand up?
The, the car show, the tournament, the vendors, it all, it's all under the same 501(c)(3).
So Roger, is the softball tournament a go? Have you talked to Bill Hawkins, or?
Yeah, me and Bill, that we talked today, actually, but yes, it's unless something throws a wrench in it, we're still planning a three-day event for the softball tournament.
Wonderful.
We get shut down again. Yeah, and honestly, that the softball turn is such a huge part of of bringing attendance into the city, you know, that group alone. I I I don't know if the the jamboree is successful without that portion of it, because I just don't think we bring in that many outside people besides what what's associated with the softball tournament.
You're muted, uh, JR.
I was gonna tell Roger, I hope this year surprises how many people are are desperate to have some fun after COVID and everybody kind of getting their shots, hopefully, uh, you know, in the next month or two, so um Roger, I I would I would uh, encourage you to come to council if you have a need for funds. I've seen council in the past give money to tourism groups that really are even outside of Renonia, so uh, can't say what council would would say, but I would encourage you, if you need funds, to come to us. See what we can do. I don't know if we can put all the softball fees back into jamboree or what, but there's might be something we can do to help a- as a, as a town here, to help you, help you guys out. I know you're on short notice, so. Anyway.
Bill and I have a plan to go talk to Parks Committee about just that, about seeing if we could waive some of the park fees to try and help us get through. But I thank you for offering. It's a great help. It is.
Well, I'm not offering anything for sure. I'm offering my opinion. We have, you'd have to talk, have have council uh vote on it or present something to council, but I wouldn't be afraid to do it if uh, if you need something. I think it's under special circumstances here this year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion to accept the application for the jamboree 2021?
I'll make that motion that we accept the application for jamboree for 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been so moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Counselor Potter?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie, and and thank you, Roger, for being patient for three hours with our meeting and and thank you for for stepping up and and making this possible for the city of Renonia. I I think you're gonna get a large turnout this year, and I think you're gonna get a lot of help, so thank you. Thank you again, Roger.
Stephanie, we need to have a discussion about agenda scheduling. Put me at the beginning next time, would you?
You have the left of that.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Okay, moving on to Staff Report Cemetery Committee Action Items.
Is Ben on here?
He is not.
Okay, so I'll present for him. Um, so one of the things that we've been working as staff is to try and bring to council and have council direct the committees with kind of things they're interested in having the committees do footwork on. Because left to their own accord, committees kind of come up with things to pay attention to and want to work on. Um, so we're kind of starting to drive it being a committee action that then moves the council, um, or sorry, that it be a council action that directs the committees and what they want them to focus on for the different elements. So this is, the first one's coming from Ben based on cemetery action items and just things that are, um, on the plate of the cemetery and that we would like recommendations or discussions to happen at the committee level. This would be taken to the committee by the liaison in that format that we were supposed to have an April twenty twenty powwow with committee members and council to talk about this kind of circle of process with things coming from council to the committee. Committee recommendations getting verified by staff and coming back to the council for decision-making, that pattern. We never got to have the meeting with the committees, they've individually heard it, but kind of more of a whole group process, so. This wasn't, um, this is coming to council, if there's something on here that you're like, no, that shouldn't be discussed by the committee, or we don't want the committee working on that, um, now would be the time to kind of point that out. But these are things that are on the plate of the cemetery or potential to be on the plate of the cemetery where we wanted the committee to do footwork. And just have those discussions as the representatives of the whole town instead of staff making those determinations and bringing it to council or making the decisions. Does the committees really do, uh, there's a benefit to the citizens talking about it and kind of having an elevator speech so when decisions are made, that the public at large has heard it from someone they know why we're doing something the way we're doing it. And it's not just a surprise to the whole town that we're either putting in fixing cremations or putting in no dogs or, you know, it's all been kind of fleshed out with the committee. Is there anything on here that's super concerning or?
Counsel Webb.
No, I, when I first read this, I was like, why is this coming to us? This needs to go to committee and then I read, oh, it is going to committee. No, I think this is a great process and and it, I mean, it's a little, it seems a little awkward here at first because it used to be staff would just recommend the committee. But this kind of safeguards the, somebody going, well, why were they working on this? We're not gonna approve this. So, so here's our upfront. I think all the recommendations I'm saying here to this committee are all worthy things that that I want them to work on and flesh out for us. Um, so it looks like, uh, this first go-around's a win to me. So I would support this recommendation to send these items to the cemetery committee.
Thank you Dale.
Is it asking us questions here on which one of the three we want them to focus on? Or we gonna let them decide, Josette? The first three bullet points about dog waste station.
The first three bullet points? For the com-committee consideration?
Yeah, was they wanting us to pick one or they gonna let them pick?
No, so all of these elements, the, um, mixed cremation, the dog waste, the flagpole, the rolling permanent canopy, those are all elements. We want the committee to pick one, flesh it out. When they send a recommendation to council, go to the next one, flesh it out. Send a recommendation to council, that's kind of how the process is lined out. Those questions were he was posing to the committee, these are your options, the, that's kind of what he was doing there.
Good, can they also include the cost and where the funds are coming from?
For the, for the different elements?
Yeah, because when you get down here to talk about, uh, the third, third one down or about, um, more suitable coverage and storage structures, building another structure up there, you know, where's that money coming from and how much it gonna cost?
Yeah, so that would be fleshed out, staff would bring that to the committee when they discuss the item. So if it's a dog waste station and that's on their agenda, we would be submitting, these are the things we have in other parks for dog waste stations, this is the cost, it would come out of operations and maintenance. And that, and then if they recommend that, that same information would come back to council for the final approval of it. They're not in this because, yeah, I get what you're saying, but they're not in this part because it will be as they're working on each thing.
Yeah, I didn't have any.
Up-to-date cost.
Like Counsel Webb, I thought they were all pretty good issues to get working on. Um, I don't really care what order, uh, we do have a flagpole laying on the ground up there last I seen. I don't know if they're gonna put it back up for Memorial Day or what, but.
Yeah, so the flagpole is actually an Eagle Scout project, the big flagpole. This is talking about the ones that we hang memorial flags around on Memorial Day. It's a little different, but it's part of an Eagle Scout project, the restoration of that, remounting of it up by the, um, memorial stone is where the flagpole's gonna get moved to. It was by the one tree and the flag just always got ripped to shreds. So we had a Boy Scout that was doing the Eagle Scout project and is gonna rehab the flag and remount it as Eagle Scout project.
Do we have an update on when they're gonna start on that again?
So he got it approved by his Eagle Board because that was the next step they were at, and I have not talked to them this week. The family.
Counsel Williams.
I have a question and an observation. Um, how many souls could be interred in one of those little cubicles? I mean, how big is it inside?
Well, right now, Grant, only, the rules only allow for one soul. We had an elderly woman who wanted to be, her cremains to be, and her husband's mixed when she passes.
Right.
And the only opportunity open to them currently is that they buy two next to each other.
Right.
But she doesn't really want to split their remains into two things, mix them and then split them into two. And so it's twenty-four spots on each side, you could hold two sets of cremains.
Yeah, I was, I was just.
Standard box that they come in.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could have a single price or you could have a family price. But that's, I mean, that's just an item for discussion.
So, so what we were proposing, what he's proposing the committee to discuss is having the price that's listed currently and then having a, a mixed cremains additional fee.
Right.
For two pe-for two people, two either married or a legal partnership couple.
Right.
Being one cremain niche, not like a brother and a sister, but maybe make some specifics that it's people, you know, a couple or or a legal, somebody recognized legally as partners in life.
Yeah.
So that's what he's having them kind of.
I was just wondering, like a family wanted to buy one. I mean, we're, with, with the number of spots that we have available, we could potentially run out of spots pretty quick.
Yeah, so the family option is the benches that we have that are getting placed in the urn garden and those will hold four souls.
Okay.
And there's, there's actually cylinders, four cylinders. So someone, a family could buy a family bench, but we wouldn't probably, just because there's not enough room to list the number of people on the front in the little cube, that would have to just be a maximum of two souls. And we're hoping that the rules would stick with legal partners or married couple and not kind of a whole bunch of others because there's not room to engrave that much there.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay, uh, just, and and another one was an observation. At my father's funeral, uh, they had one of those big metal heavy canopy things and the wind came up and if our family hadn't have grabbed it and held it down, it would have blew away and it's really heavy. Uh, if, if, because it, there, it's like a sail, uh, when the wind comes. And if we were to get one of those, we would have to be able to store it in a place where it couldn't just take off like a, like a kite.
Yeah, and that's just the, currently, we have a, a fabric canopy tent that we put up for, um, urn burials or burials of any kind. But it was just an idea because there's a couple of cemeteries around that it helps this, you can kind of cover, if the weather's gonna come in, you can cover the gravesite.
Yeah.
So it stays dry for when people are there the next day, different things like that. But yeah, it was just an idea.
Yeah, that was just an observation that I had because that thing tried to take off while we were right in the middle of the service and a gust of wind came and we had to grab it to keep it from blowing away.
Yikes, yeah.
Counsel Williams read us packet.
Can we get a, a general consensus from the council to have, uh, Counsel Allen, the liaison of the cemetery committee, present this, um, these two pages, uh, upgrade, uh, and recommendations and ideas to the cemetery committee? Um, and I see a thumbs up from Counsel Williams, Counsel Webb. And JR is willing to get right on this and do you need anything else JR to take to the.
Lorna had her thumb up.
Okay, Counsel Potter.
I, I, I think Stephanie could probably just forward it to the chairman unless he want me to do it.
No, we'll do that, it'll be in their packet.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll forward it to them, but also it's, the idea is the council liaison will relay any sentiments that council said about it.
Can you send me an E-printable form for the meeting? That I'm supposed to, uh, a for, a printable document, PDF on that form that Josette wants and I'll make sure to fill it out with the meeting.
Oh, sure, like what, what they said, what you, yeah.
Yeah, then I'll just, then I'll just scan it back to you.
Okay.
Easier that way for me.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, business from the departments. Chief Connor, welcome.
Hello, I don't actually have a report for you guys tonight, but I do have the new policy coming up next. So I guess I can talk to you a little bit about that now. Um, that policy is for naloxone or Narcan administration within our department. Um, we've had a policy in the past, um, years ago, but we didn't have access to a drug or the training to be able to administer it. Um, it's now being provided by Adventist Health. Um, so that's where the, the updated policy is coming from. Um, the drug itself is to help stop the overdose once it's getting started and we'll be able to administer that, uh, it's a nasal spray, there's no needles involved. And we'll be carrying that in our patrol vehicles and we're also able to give it out to people in need or leave it at residences where we feel like might be, uh, a benefit to, to them or there's potential for an overdose at the house at a later time. So that's kind of the gist of it.
What's the expense on the nasal units, chief?
Currently, right now, they're provided under a grant, so we don't pay anything for those. Um, if we, if we were, um, they're, they're super expensive. I want to say the kits, they hold, uh, two nasal sprays in each kit. And I want to say they said they were right around the two hundred dollar mark each.
Yeah, I, I did some research on it yesterday and it, it's very inexpensive to, to make actually, but the drug companies just go crazy on, uh, on, on the pricing on that is they increased it up to six hundred percent. So at least the shots are very expensive. Uh, is there an expiration date, expiration date on those?
Yes, they, I want to say they're two, they're good for two years. And any, anything that's expired, then we can, uh, get replaced at no cost from Delsin.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Webb.
Yeah, Chief Connor, uh, where are we at on our SRO, um, officer? And, uh, it's a school taken, are they, have they changed their mind on having an SRO?
Yeah, they, I actually met with, with Aaron this morning and he has advised that he does not intend to have a SRO for the next school year. Um, the remaining portions of your question, um, probably, we should probably chat about that in private.
Okay. Yeah, so how, so I guess that's a budget issue for us coming up then.
Uh, yeah, could, could definitely be, uh, it's creating some concerns. I think, uh, Angie and I have discussed it in, in, in depth, um, I think we're getting it figured out.
So, I heard that, that, that was just an administrative decision up there, didn't go in front of the school board.
I, I was told that it was announced to, to the school board, but I, I'm not certain of that.
Yeah, well, and again, that's a administrative decision, not the school board making that decision, so. Um, I know in the past before we had an SRO, and this was part of our discussion of why we went to this because I remember seeing our patrol cars in front of that school over there on a regular basis, usually toward the end of the day, because you guys were getting called up there to deal with things. And I don't remember if we ever put a man hour, you know, time together on that of how much you guys end up dealing with issues at the school. You got any ballpark idea?
Uh, not right off the top of my head. I know we tracked a bunch of those hours during the, the, the school months before COVID. Um, and then once COVID kind of struck and our activities up there obviously diminished. Um, but it's something I can, I can probably put together a rough ballpark, just looking at the hours that we did track.
Yeah, because it seemed like that was part of the decision process is having the SRO then, you know, we had somebody there dealing with it immediately, uh, wasn't having a patrol officer happen to respond up there for issues. So did the school administrator give you any reasons why they're pulling the pin on it?
Some, um, more that it's probably a more of a private discussion.
Okay. I guess I need to come talk to you.
Yeah, me, me or Josette, Josette's kind of up on what's, what's going on.
All right. Thanks, chief.
No problem.
Counsel Williams.
I have, uh, a couple of questions about the, uh, overdose thing. Uh, are there any statistics to verify whether, knowing that this is available, that people act more riskily, they, uh, they know, i-is, is there any way to track that with this, with this program in place, do people act more stupid because they know there's a safety net?
Yeah, I, I don't think so. Um, I, I can do some checking on the stats and see if there's anything that's like that. But I, in, in the initial meetings I've had with the healthcare providers, that wasn't discussed.
Yeah, I know that there's been, uh, several issues in the past where some young people lost their lives. And I would just hate to see anything that might make them feel a little more comfortable doing something stupid if they knew that all you had to do was call nine one one and they'd be right there with an overdose fix.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's, there's any stats that has actually tracked whether there's been an increase or not. And we haven't, we've, we've been pretty fortunate over, over my tenure here. We haven't had a, a lot of deaths, there have been some as a result of overdose. And in a lot of those cases, it wouldn't have mattered whether we had it or not.
Right.
Because it, it, it really needs to be administered fairly quickly.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, it's a matter of, of getting there. Once it's administered, it's pretty fast acting, but if it's a, a long downtime or something like that, then it's not going to be effective.
What kind of a time window is there?
They, they really kind of need to still be somewhat breathing and having a pulse.
Right, yeah.
If they're clearly in, you know, if we're, we're in CPR mode, it doesn't mean we, we can't try it. It's not going to hurt to try it anyway.
Right.
If it is going to be effective, it's going to, it, it'll start reacting within minutes.
Okay.
And we can administer, we can continue to administer, administer those doses so long as we have them.
Right.
And hope, hope we get a response out of it. And it doesn't, it's, it's not a drug that we have to worry about if we make a mistake and we give it to somebody.
Right.
That it's going to, it's, it's not going to hurt them.
Yeah, the, the reason I'm so inquisitive about this is I go up to the cemetery all the time and I find needles up there. Almost every time I go up there, sometimes one, sometimes two or three. And I mean, they're just like thrown out of cars. They're, a kid could step on them, whatever. So I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of that activity going on.
Yeah, and we, we pick up a lot of needles from, I mean, the bottle return at Century Market.
Right.
On, on, on a regular basis and we're, we, we thought about trying to, you know, maybe putting some cameras up at Century Market because realistically, I mean, if you're doing that to yourself, it's one thing, but now you're, you're putting a bunch of other people at risk by leaving those things laying around.
Yep. Especially little kids who don't know what they are.
Yeah, I mean, just a matter of stepping on one of them and you could be contaminated with, with anything.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions for the chief? Counselor Allen.
Yeah, chief, is this same thing as Narcon?
Narcan, yes, it's exactly the same thing.
Yeah, I think they give that out to the people that get out of jail, two doses when they get out of the Portland jail. They just give it to them because they know they're going to go party is what I was told, but.
Yeah, it's, and it's available also at our, our health center. If somebody wants to go get a kit, they'll give it to them.
Right.
So yeah, it's readily available now and now they're, they're trying to make sure that all of us in patrol cars have, have those kits available and the training necessary for it. And like I said, we can, we can give them out and leave them at houses and give instruction on how to give it. It seems like a pretty good program.
That, that kind of piqued my curiosity when you say that. What do you mean by leaving it at houses? They predict that they're going to need it and you just say, oh, give it, Ace, you need it?
Yeah, yeah, if we go to a house where there's, you know, known drug use or there's been a, a past incident or something like that and we feel, you know what? They, they, they could possibly use this, we could leave a kit at their house.
Oh, okay. Does the fire department also do that too? Do they have it onboard?
I, I think their, their, their ambulance unit has a different type of Narcan. I'm not 100% certain and we were going to follow up with the fire department to make sure they also have it. That's in coordination with Adventist Health, so.
Yeah, it, it, it works. I don't know if you've had a chance to administrate it, but a friend of mine's a Portland fireman and he's administrated it and saved people, sometimes the same person every week for a month, so.
Yeah, I haven't had the opportunity to use it yet, but I, I've seen it used on a regular and it, it, it does, it reacts pretty quickly. So long as there's, there's signs of life still there.
You know, hopefully, I guess the goal is somebody gets saved and they say, what am I doing? Wake up to that and quit doing it, but.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be our hopes. With some of the new drug laws, I can, I can foresee it becoming a, a more, more of a problem.
Counsel Williams.
I'm not sure who to thank, but I noticed that the curb got painted in front of the, the dentist office and I just wanted to thank whoever did that because it's much nicer. Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
I'm going to guess that was probably Public Works.
Well, let them know.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, discussing for the chief? Well, I guess not. Thank you, chief, for your participation tonight.
No problem.
Also, thank you for you and your officers keeping us safe here in Vernonia.
No problem.
Okay, any other departments tonight? Okay, well, if not, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 2021 dash 06, a resolution adopting a policy for the administration of opioid, opioid overdose medication for the Vernonia Police Department. Anyone like to make a motion to accept, apply for this grant for opioid medication?
It's just the policy.
Policy, yeah.
I got it right here.
Go ahead, Counsel, Counsel Webb.
I move, we approve resolution number 2021 dash 06, a resolution adopting a policy for the administration of opioid overdose medication for the Vernonia Police Department.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second's been made by Counsel Williams. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counsel Webb?
Aight.
Counsel Williams?
Aight.
Counsel Allen?
Aight.
Counsel Potter?
Aight.
Mayor Hubert?
Aight.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Resolution number 2021 dash 07, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Angie?
Thanks for leaving me for laughs.
Sorry.
That's all right. Okay, so most of this is, most of the general fund supplemental is all related to the building. It's been going crazy, so I'll just go down, if you guys all have the worksheet in front of you there, I'll just kind of go down through the line items. Interest income, I'm decreasing. It's been really high the last couple of years. I called and talked to the people at the state school and they said that the, the interest that we receive is based on the interest rates that the Fed set. So because that's gone down, we're not getting the same rate that we were collecting. So we're getting, we're seeing considerably lower interest in the pool account. And then we also this year started allocating to those reserve funds their portion of that. So we're seeing some of that leave the, the admin budget. So I went ahead and adjusted that. That's the only decrease in revenue in, in this supplemental. And then all the, the remaining ones in the admin fund, except for the CARES Act money, are all related to building permits, planning fees, engineering fees and all that. So those are all going up. And then in the expenditures, they're offset by the professional services as our engineer and our planner, then the inspection fees, things related to the permits, those expenses are also going up to just offset that. I bumped up the building maintenance line item. We had some furnace repairs and replacements that we had to do. We've got new cameras for city hall. And then we are going to be replacing the carpet in the admin office. It's long overdue. We've got huge rips. I know you've all been in here and you've seen how disgusting it is, so I put a little extra in there so we could do that. Then I had to expense the CARES Act money. That was the requirement from the auditors that we show it as its own line item in and out. And what I did, the expense of that was partial, most of it is salaries for the police. And then there was like the tablets or the Chromebooks that you guys are using and then there were some stuff at the library. So that's what makes up the, the $61,000 there. And I decreased the legal expense line item by $15,000. And we had bumped it up, not knowing what was going on with the Nickerson thing going into this budget year, so that's over and done with. Hold some of that, the retiree, I'm dropping that. We are no longer, none of our retirees, the three people that were in the union contract at the time are all off of CIS, they're all Medicare eligible, so the expense that the city will have from now on is just to have half of their supplemental, which is considerably less than what we were paying before. Police, I put in, we received $6,000 for the sale of the Tahoe a while back. You see the decrease in salaries, that part of that CARES money. And then we've had to bump up the maintenance line item. And they had some issues with, we had to replace the transmission and then the suspension and one of the other rigs. So those were things that weren't expected. And even, so at the end of all of that, we still were able to add money to our contingency in that fund. Do you guys have any questions on general fund before I move forward? Parks has seen huge revenue spikes. I bumped those figures up. And then in relation to that, the park host fees will go up. So those have been bumped. Merchant fees are the fees charged to us by the pay station. The lake revenue has been crazy, so that I've added that in there to compensate some of that. Building maintenance, oh, that was the cameras that we added at Hawkins Park to try to figure out what's going or catch the people that have been vandalizing gazebo back there and causing problems. That contingency was also bumped up quite a bit. Water and sewer both connection fees in correlation with the building are way higher than what we were anticipating. And then in relation to that, the water distribution is where we charge all of the materials that go to hooking in new water connections. So that's obviously going to be up some more. We have to do treatments up a little bit. Stuff's just been making more water. Building maintenance, I decreased, I believe, originally we were thinking of either replacing the green shed or it was either that or the roof on the water plant. There was something that we kept putting in the budget and it didn't, Jeff, it's not going to. I don't think we're going to replace that shed when it comes down, so we're just taking that out. And then sewer, the only other thing was the building maintenance. I bumped that up and that was also for some cameras out of the sewer again. That's all we got. And each one of these funds, the contingency, didn't have to be decreased to cover any of the changes. So we're still coming out ahead.
Thank you, Angie. Any discussion or questions for Angie?
How much was the cameras charged for parks? I'm not seeing it here. Am I listening to line?
It was in the building maintenance line item, that 15, 16. I bumped it up $1,000.
Oh, so parks was charged $1,000 or parks was charged $6,000?
No, they were charged $1,000 for the cameras. So the overall budget goes up to six for that line item.
Anything else? Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021 dash 07 supplemental budget?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2021 dash 07, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Counsel Allen or Counsel Williams seconded. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Before I call the roll, Del, do you have a question?
No, I was just raising my hand to make the motion.
Sorry about that.
Counsel Webb? On that note, Counsel Webb?
Aight.
Counsel Williams?
Aight.
Counsel Allen?
Aight.
Counsel Potter?
Aight.
Mayor Hubert?
Aight.
Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you, Stephanie, and thank you, Angie.
Yes, thank you, Angie.
Yep. Good night.
Night, night.
Good night. See you tomorrow, maybe.
Maybe. I'll be here asleep.
Got to come in and look at that, got to come in and look at that carpet.
Oh, it's not coming tomorrow.
I know. Is there any correspondence tonight? Okay, no. So we'll move into city administrative report till then.
So I apologize, I don't have a written report for you. But just some things that are going on. So the lake intake will be dug out on Thursday. For Counselor Webb wanting to know when that would be happening. The Hawkins Cottonwoods will be coming down in the next week to two weeks as Tim can drop them, buck them, cut them into lengths and then Mike Peel is going to just take the logs away for us so we don't have to dump them somewhere. The Spencer Park memorial trees, the memorial stone placards and cedar red, Western red cedar are all going to be planted in Spencer Park or at, or at Bullmire. They're supposed to be coming tomorrow or Wednesday from Supertrees. And then we're just working on the multitude of projects that the city has going on. We're still working on the class up sewer, trying to get those logs yarded to the neighbor's property and the stumps cleared out of the project area. And then we're not yet at a point, so we got the small cities allotment money to pave this year, but our past grant from small cities allotment required sidewalk, ADA sidewalks up by River Street. The ones that were put in, ODOT wouldn't give us a schematic that we had to match. They made us do it. Well, we didn't do it right. So we're redoing that approach and once that's completed, then we can get bids for the paving for this fiscal year. So we're still hopeful that the paving will still happen this fiscal year before July 1. And I think the streets we did were Spencer, Alabama and Weed, if I'm remembering right. And so we're still kind of working through those things. And that's kind of all we've got, unless you guys have questions.
Counsel Williams.
I have a question. Did we ever talk about the trees that have been going down around the lake? Did I miss something on that?
The trees that are going down? You mean cut down?
Yeah.
So those, the ones that Tim's cut down were either danger trees or were on that list of hazardous trees that we, we went to each park and gave you, showed you guys a spreadsheet. Maybe we didn't show it to the new ones, but I can print you that.
No, no.
And identified all the trees that were potentially hazardous and he's slowly getting to all of the ones on that spreadsheet.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious because my wife was walking around the lake and she said, they're dropping trees all over the place. And it kind of freaked her out and I, I assured her that they were probably dangerous or dead or dying trees.
Yeah, and then he, he did do a lot of cutting back of the blackberries, which looks really stark right now. But it's what needed to happen for kind of it not encroaching. But there are some changes we've heard about from the public that they are like, oh, it's all, ah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Josette? Counsel Webb.
So is Public Works crew going to use tobacco to dig in for those bigger cedar, cedar trees there on Bullmire?
Yeah, so the Public Works crew is the ones that planted all the Spencer trees. They're going to also plant the cedar trees. Yeah, so the Public Works crew is the ones that planted all the Spencer trees, they're gonna also plant the cedar trees up there. Um, I just thought of something. We did turn in the or, travel organ grant, um, that we had discussed, that we asked for the new waste receptacles, doggy poo bag boxes that'll go on the half of those, drip line irrigation to the poles, electrifying the remaining poles and the brackets for hanging baskets and the basket, um, equipment and then resetting roughly a thousand square feet of the pavers where they've sunk or become a trip hazard and three potential murals that different downtown businesses, um, had, had re, wanted to put on their buildings and working with the street art alliance, the Portland Street Art Alliance, doing some, some of them want kind of a historic Vernonia feel, some of them want a nature feel and so they're, they're all gonna be juried and, uh, approved if they, if, when we get the grant.
And Josette, I, I'd really like to recognize, um, the work you did in applying for that grant. I, you were, wrote a beautiful letter, which I signed, um, a few days ago and not only you worked hard on it, but Ben, Ben really stepped up and, and provided mapping and detailed mapping of the watering lines and, uh, and, and the various, where their waste can receptacles are and he, in, in color and he did a really good job, so. Nice work, you guys.
I'll let them know.
And, and we, I think we will find out the results on that and by April thirtieth, I believe.
Yeah.
So. We have our fingers crossed, but we, we feel pretty confident.
Yeah, we're hoping.
Yeah. Anything else, Counselor Webb?
So, we discussed the other day that you guys got like a twenty-four hour notice to put in some grant money? Did you wanna just?
Sure, so you guys know how I mentioned to you that we had gotten an estimate from representatives of Bonamici for the federal money that potentially Vernonia's estimated to get the four hundred and sixty thousand and that the rules that came down with that were that the state couldn't touch the money that had been allocated to the different municipalities and cities. However, the state actually got its own money from that relief package, the American Rescue Plan Act. And we got like, I got a call at three in the afternoon from Representative Brad Witt's office saying, we need two projects or three projects that you have numbers for, um, that you would like because the state's looking at what the different cities could do with the money the state gets. So, we had money for, or numbers for the Louisiana Avenue North-South connection, um, which was kind of surveying it, getting the topos, grading out the part that's wooded, um, potentially doing a sidewalk on one side, stormwater and paving. So we pitched that as one of the projects, um, which came to like three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. And then the lady, the representative's office had said that some people were like asking for a roof on a gymnasium. And I'm like, that seems crazy. So we threw in a crazy one, which was to pave the cemetery road because we, they were like, ask for something that will get funded no other way. So Ben came up with a map and some square footage and we came up with some just ballpark estimates of grading, um, and doing a topping of rock and then paving sixteen feet wide. The roads in the cemetery are twenty feet wide, but the grass kind of grows in on the edges a little and we figured, uh, pavement machine will pave eight feet. So we said, okay, well, if we did two passes, it would be a sixteen foot wide road, which would be really necessary and really no other funding source would help us with that. So that's the second project that, that we pitched to the state. So we don't know what they're gonna do with these projects, if they're gonna score them, if they just decide that our projects are great and give us the money to pull them off. I don't know what they're gonna do with it, but, um, I did tell Counselor Webb when he came in that day that that's what we had sent up to the state representative on our behalf.
Fingers stretched again.
Right?
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Well, thank you, Josette, and thanks for all your hard work you've been doing as of lately, that's for sure. Um, items from the mayor and counselors. Counselor Webb?
Make it quick. Uh, former councilor McNair and myself took a walk today in the, in the Mill property. Uh, just kinda did a tree survey. Um, uh, Bruce, Bruce asked, he wants to make a more formal report, I think, probably to the council, but, um, anyhow, we, we identified some opportunity down there with the, the trees that were, I ribbed them last year. We didn't find too many that had died, so that was one good sign. And then we're seeing some natural regeneration in some spots. So there's some real baby trees here and there, but, uh, so anyhow, and they're starting to grow a little bit, but there's such a grass environment down there, it's, they're gonna take them a few years to get their head up that, above that, so anyhow. And I look forward to getting the lake pump going because I told Jeff today, I said, you know what, Jeff, I took your spot. And he's like, what? I said, yeah, now I'm getting all the complaints about, when are you gonna start the lake pump?
No good deed goes unpunished.
That's right.
My mother-in-law always said that.
Okay, anybody else? Well then, if not, we'll move on to an action item summary tonight.
Okay, I have that staff will revise ordinance nine thirty-two, the document amending it and present that to council on April nineteenth. Staff will notify the library board new members of their appointment and will notify the open air market group that there is a kind of grassroots citywide cleanup day happening on April seventeenth. Uh, if anyone's interested, Rachel Oregon is putting up, um, some opportunities, the library. Um, I believe Green Team is gonna work at the library, City Hall, the VCLC. I know Counselor Allen's looking at getting people to do some power washing of different downtown sidewalks and pavers and such. Um, and that's what I have for action item.
Okay, thank you, Josette. Can anybody else think of anything that she might have forgotten? Counselor Williams?
Uh, the Jamboree, did you mention the Jamboree Committee? That passed.
Yeah, so that, that, they, they already know that, that's not one that we normally, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hey, it's eleven o'clock straight up, why don't I adjourn the meeting?
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and, and your perseverance, good night.
They are bailed out early on us.
Yeah, you did.